Folks, the purpose of tonight is to have the consultant take us through the process that they went through in developing this draft plan. And give us an opportunity to, if there's any high-level questions, we're not going to get in the details of the weeds tonight about things. I might make sure we're headed down a more general path. But if there are particular topics that you want to cover in more detail, you'll have an opportunity to express those concerns tonight, and they'll take the note of it. And then when we come back for our next work session, we'll get into a lot more detail on that. This is also, it's very important to know this, what we're seeing tonight is really the product of our consultants, by and large. The staff is still in the process of reviewing this document, so it's not, the questions will probably be more pointed to the consultant than the staff tonight because they have not, they have not influenced us a lot, and they have not added their comments or reviewed questions. So it's important to know, you know, who we should be asking clarification on. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the town manager to take us through a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll notice we're a little bit different in set up the day. So Ben and Courtney, along with the consultants, are driving the ship. I get to be a spectator tonight and take it in along with you. I would like to take a moment to introduce Marty Saunders. You probably all have seen and talked to Marty, but Marty is our planning tech. She ably supports and handles the PZB meeting minutes and is here to serve you tonight. So I think she's met all of you before, been with us more than a year, and we are proud to have her as a part of our team. She is a little nervous, so be kind to her. Before I turn it over to Ben and Courtney, I would like to just give Todd a brief minute to update council on a couple things before we really get into transportation.
Thank you, Martha. The first item, I want to update you on the Mooresville Square Shopping Center. Thanks to Frank Gray, we've been able to resolve the whole promise agreement that Dan requested, so we certainly appreciate Frank's efforts on that. Second, you may know that Dan Mizinba has expressed concern about parking in the shopping center during town events for this Saturday, for the East Meets West event. We will have two attendants in the shopping center parking lot. For any attendees that attempt to park there, we will direct them to the designated parking area, so we're looking forward to getting there on Saturday. The second thing, just a reminder, if you would, send me your availability dates for the phone interview, for the strategic planning, study and analysis interview. You can send that by this Friday, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
And Edson will start us off with a presentation.
So I'm just going to give you a quick, brief intro presentation, then we'll move on to the consultant's presentation. And a lot of what you'll see here, the mayor already said, but...
I'm sorry.
So you saw my thunder, Mayor.
I'm sorry, man.
But I think we can work through it. Again, just want to reiterate, this is a draft plan. This is the first draft that has come out. Staff, as the mayor mentioned, staff is reviewing this draft at the same time as both the PZB and the council. And you'll see there I have the UDO section where, per the UDO, the Planning and Zoning Board shall formulate and maintain a comprehensive plan. So based on that language, we decided to do this a little bit differently than in past planning efforts where we bring forth a more, a little bit more polished staff, staff plan that's already, that's already been gone through staff review. This time, staff is reviewing it at the same time as the boards. And I think ultimately, we'll come out with a better plan that way. It'll, everyone can hear the same comments. And as you see on the screen there, the, all the comments on the draft plan will be reviewed to develop the final plan. So what you'll see when the plan enters the official council process, hopefully at the end of October, is a PZB recommended plan that will have all the, all the council, all the staff comments and PZB comments to that time in the plan, and it'll be the official Planning and Zoning Board's recommended plan. So it, it'll be a little bit different process, but I think it'll be a good outcome for us. Work session purpose tonight, again, is to receive a detailed presentation of the draft comprehensive transportation plan update by the consultant. Your job is to ask clarifying questions and ask for additional information needed to evaluate the draft plan, but as the mayor said, not get into the weeds. And do want to make clear, I checked with the consultant, and it is okay to ask questions during the presentation. The, the Planning and Zoning Board, the presentation ran a little long, so we, we know how difficult it can be sometimes to hold your questions for an hour, so we will let you interrupt the presentation, ask questions tonight. Public comments and schedule. We are, we are now taking public comments on the plan. We were hoping to be able to run through the PEAK process. We've had a little bit of hiccup with that, so we have a public comment portal on the plan webpage, townofmooresville.org backslash transportation plan update. If you go to that webpage, there's a nice big button there that you can see under the yellow arrow. Click that button, you can submit a comment and hit submit, and it'll come directly to staff, and we'll be compiling those as we go along. And of course, those will be added into the record and presented to both Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council throughout the process.
Is there a cutoff date for that?
Not, not at this point. The cutoff date will most likely be after the Town Council closes the public hearing. So when Town Council closes the public hearing, we'll take that comment down, and then that'll give us, hopefully, a couple weeks to compile all the, any comments we'd received to date, and then make sure that when council sees the, what hopefully will be the final draft document after the public hearing, all the public comments will be compiled and presented to council at that time.
Does that include the emails that have already been received?
Yes, yeah, we are keeping track of those. One comment, hand it out, an appendix C at your seat tonight. That is the start of the public comment compilation. It is a work in progress, but it does include pretty much all the comments we've received today. It may not have some of the emails logged in that were sent more directly to staff. We'll work on, with the consultant, on getting those compiled and into that appendix for your next meeting, but that is, it does cover all the public engagement that was done during the planning process and all the open houses we've held today.
Will these be transcribed?
I don't know that we'll transcribe those. That actually, the document, I will say, it was originally, it's supposed to be in 11 by 17 format. I had to shrink it down, and I got it late today and had to shrink it down to get the copier to actually work and get you copies in time tonight. So we will make sure for the next meetings to get it to you in the native 11 by 17 format where it'll be a little bit easier to read that information.
Thank you, perfect.
And we'll also have electronic copy of that included for the next meeting of PEAK Agenda, so you can actually, you'll be able to pull it up on your computer and zoom in. And we'll get, and of course, as, we are trying to upload everything we do to the website as we go along, so we'll try and get these presentations you see tonight, as well as that additional appendix uploaded to the website in the next day or two as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had a question. I thought early on, there was some, we were asking for input early on with the very first thing, we had a portal at that time. I know people submitted stuff. Would that ever be included?
That, that information, what we have, should be included in that appendix C. So that appendix C does have all the, everything that was done during all the open houses and the initial...
The one you just delivered?
Yes. So that should have everything, that is very complete through probably August. And then anything that's come in after about August is, may be missing, and we'll be working on continuing to add, add that information in and, and get everything else compiled in there.
Okay, I thought there was a portion where you could add comments and they would be typed in versus handwritten, so those, you're saying are included?
They, they should be in there.
Okay.
But we'll double check that and confirm, but I know the consultants did go through that Wiki map is what the online portal was, and they did go through that and compile the comments out of that as best they could.
Thank you.
What about the emails? Like, some of the emails went through, I don't see any of those emails.
Well, like I said, some of the latest emails, we haven't had a chance to get that in, into that. I do have those compiled, and, and we're, we had, staff had started to compile some information, so we just have to get that over to the consultants and get it into that. But we do have that information and those emails, and they will be added into that And then finally, just to give you an update on the schedule, and we've talked about this a little bit before, but just as a reminder, Planning and Zoning Board heard this presentation last Thursday, and we will be going back to them this Thursday with some updated information and, and give them an opportunity to really dig into the plan and give them a nice amount of time to, so they can really review it and start forming their recommendation. You're receiving your initial presentation tonight, and then Planning and Zoning Board will have their official public comment session and, and hopefully, recommendation on Thursday, October 12th, Town Council. You'll have another work session on, on Tuesday, October 17th, when we're going to have you down here in the roundtable format and give you a little bit more opportunity to really dig in and, and start working through the plan. And then where our goal is to start the briefing process on Tuesday, October 24th, if we can start briefing process that day. The goal would be to have the plan adopted before the end of the year. Again, one of the reasons for that goal is to get this done, but then also, we wanted the board that, that passed the money and put the money in the budget for this plan to really have the opportunity to vote and adopt the plan. So if, if we need more time, if you feel that it's going too fast, or we need to slow down and take a break, or add more meetings, we certainly can do that, but at this point, we are trying, our goal would be to get this adopted before the end of the year. And I do want to comment that we are accepting public comments at all the PZB meetings. Really, I think it'll be up to council if you want to accept comment tonight or at your next work session. We don't really want to make that decision for you, but certainly, at the PZB meetings, we are accepting comments. We actually did get one or two comments at our last PZB meeting that'll be added into the record, so.
Benjamin, are you saying open it up to any members of the audience to come up and have three minutes?
Yes, that's what we're doing at the PZB, but it, certainly, if council would like to do that tonight, we can do that before we start the consultant presentation. That's at the pleasure of the council.
I'll just ask the, the public that's here tonight, did anyone want to make a public comment before hearing from the consultant's draft? I'd give you that opportunity if you really wanted to, okay? Otherwise, if there's something that the consultant brings up during the next couple hours that you want to talk about, raise your hand, I'll make sure you get a chance at the mic. Okay?
All right, and that's all for me. And with that, I will introduce Jonathan Whitehurst, who's from Kimble Horn. He's filling in for Allison tonight, who you've seen before, but he's also been one of the, on the consultant team working through this, so he's going to run you through the presentation tonight. Again, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt him and, and ask those questions. And again, we're focused in on clarifying questions and questions where you need maybe some more information that we can bring back to you to help you evaluate the plan.
All right. Thank you, Benjamin.
Jonathan, come on up.
It's great to be here. You know, when, when Allison asked me to fill in and we were talking to Ben, we saw that this meeting was from 6:30 to 9:30, and I said, if I really, really concentrate, I can get it done in three hours, so that's my promise to you all. I joke, it won't take that long. So just a little bit about, about me, I've been at Kimble Horn for about 11 years. The first seven years was just down the road on Western Parkway. The last four years, I've been in Charlotte, but kind of throughout all that time, I've partnered regularly with, with Allison, so it's great to be here on her behalf. Just touch screen, houses.
There's a key more than a mouse under.
Oh, okay. Perfect. I'll pull that up. So what, what I'm hoping to do, and not to be repetitive with what you all have already said and what Ben said, but really just give you an introduction to the plan. Tonight's presentation really is organized as the report, the draft report that you all got, five simple chapters that are pretty straightforward, and then we look forward to kind of recording those big picture questions and making sure that we're well-positioned here in about four weeks when we come back for the detailed work session to answer those comments and questions for you. So really, one of the things that we wanted to impart is that there was kind of this planning process that began several months ago, and it's not a complicated process, it's really about taking existing conditions, taking input that we received from the public during the visioning process, and helping that to guide the formation of a set of roadway, bicycle, pedestrian transit and rail recommendations. It's great to know what the needs are and how we can address those, but I think you all can appreciate that the real challenge comes in how do we allocate the limited resources that we have at our disposal. So that's where the prioritization process came in, a process where we determined how much some of these recommendations are going to cost, and then try to put forth a process and an action plan that can kind of serve as a blueprint so that this process can be implemented in the years and in some cases, the decades to come. One of the great things about this process has been the engagement. You know, when, when we go about doing engagement for these types of processes, it's about generating as much data as possible. And, and a lot of cases, we want to elevate the data that we get to be on par with the technical data that we have at our disposal. So to, to the town's credit, they developed a really robust, what we would refer to as a multi-layered outreach strategy, which included a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions with you all, with the PZB and other stakeholders, and as well, an online survey for those who could not come to a meeting, could provide input online, or as we were discussing, as simple as sending an email to staff so that that information makes its way to us. The data's real, though, the online survey, 250 responses, hundreds and hundreds of data points for us to, to consider throughout this process. And where possible, we, we take that data and we map it, and so that we can kind of overlay that on some of the technical data that we're getting to see where kind of the perception of needs aligns with where the data is telling us that needs are occurring. And as you can tell, the fact that we're still receiving input is suggesting that this has been an ongoing process throughout, and that process hasn't stopped yet. So one of the things that the, the outreach has helped us to arrive at is a set of guiding principles. These guiding principles, there's six of them, and what, what we try to do is allow this to kind of be the umbrella for the overall plan, so that as ideas are generated, as recommendations are considered, we can point back to these guiding principles and help understand if we're moving in the right direction. We'll revisit these here in a few slides when we start to talk about the prioritization of projects. Existing conditions, so back in, in the early part of this year, we, we published an existing conditions summary, and that really spoke to a little bit more detail about the demographics that are occurring in the town, the travel characteristics, and a little bit more detail on the transportation network and how the different modes are performing. Because that's kind of old information, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but just to suggest that, that, you know, Mooresville's place in the triangle is unique, and that's true in its demographics and its travel characteristics. So we would be doing a disservice to the town if we kind of didn't try to acknowledge and represent kind of the uniqueness of the demographics and the, the travel characteristics and kind of the, the uniqueness of the overall transportation network, not just now, but kind of what we can anticipate in the future.
If I could ask, is it possible for next time to, you might have already provided, but to refresh us, compare us to maybe Wake County as a whole?
Sure.
I guess, because these are nice, but I'm not sure how it compares.
Sure.
I would suggest, too, adding one, maybe the commuters that come in for the over 10,000 jobs that we have here in Mooresville, since we're talking about congestion.
Okay. Yeah, I think this, this next slide starts to speak a little bit to the kind of commuting patterns. This is more, I think, geared toward where people that live in Mooresville are working. You're, you're asking a slightly different question. Where are the people that work in Mooresville? Where do they live? What are their commute patterns? You know, what, what is the kind of characteristics when they come into town?
Well, I think you'll find that if you narrow it down, there are in certain areas of town, too, the traffic, and that might help with traffic patterns.
Okay.
Yep.
Michael, I think that needs to be a wider question because I think most of our traffic here are people probably not working in Mooresville, but trying to get to RTP or R40, that sort of thing. So I think if you just looked at Mooresville as a, as a destination, it might not give you the same answer.
Right, I agree. I was trying to add the 10,000 into the people that are already coming through. Isn't 10,000 a lot?
Yeah.
For a town our size, I mean, it's half the, a third of the population.
Right. Yep. And I mean, that's where we talk about kind of the, the uniqueness of, of the town, kind of its place in the region. And, you know, we can talk about this here in a second, but one of the great things about kind of the underlying data from a roadway and a congestion standpoint is we're, we're pulling that information from the regional travel demand model, and not to steal my own thunder, but that's a regional model, but it's based on local inputs. So, you know, we feel comfortable with, with how that, that information is generated, presented, and is used in this process.
When you say 37% others, what does other mean, like?
Right, so, so that 37%, you're talking in the circle diagram?
Yeah.
That's suggesting that 37% of the people that live in Mooresville work in Mooresville. So ideally, as you kind of, and this can be something that might be explored in the upcoming land use plan update, is how to, is that number healthy for, for the town and how to kind of generate a more of a balance between where people live and, and work in the town?
So, I think that's, you're saying that 37 live in Moores, live at other places, right? I mean, it's the workplace by city, you're saying?
Right, I'll, I'll verify that. It's my understanding that this is showing of the, of the people that live in Mooresville, where do they work?
Yeah, other, so does it mean RTP? Because it has Durham, and then I'm trying to understand, is it RTP or any other place? Because it's not very clear in that.
If I can address that, when we were going through the existing conditions report from, I think it was early this year, late last year, when the report was published, that 37% is supposed to be, essentially, it's anything not listed there, so any place other than Raleigh, Cary, Mooresville or Durham. So it would, it would cover RTP as well as any other areas that may be a little bit outside of the triangle.
So when you say Durham, are you taking Durham, Conti, or like, or Wake County? Because the reason I'm asking that is Durham, city of Durham, because the county lines define a Mooresville jurisdiction. Mooresville goes to Wake County and both sides. That's like, that 37% is a huge percentage there.
Yeah, those numbers would be looking at the cities, they're going into cities, travel patterns into cities.
Other could be like Clayton, could be Johnson County, could be Chatham, could be Pittsburgh.
So that's what I'm trying, is it?
So the other's a huge area.
Would it be possible to break the 37% and add RTP as a city? Because that would be helpful to, to granulate that a little bit.
Yeah, because, because the data go that far on the census?
Yeah, this is, this data is all based out of, off of the census, and so the census does not recognize, I don't believe the census recognizes RTP. So this is really just a conglomeration of data right out of the census. So that's, that's why it's broken out the way it is.
Yeah, that, that kind of makes sense, or it might be outside the town itself, like when we're flying out, because you say 37, because then the commute, the colors are very deceptive, because the yellow to the yellow at 4% has a 40 to 59% travel time is, I'm trying to, you know, take the color coding there. Could be anything, could be air, you know, like that's, I'm trying to gauge that.
This is like two different slides.
Yeah.
Data does not co-mingle.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I mean, this information is, it, it's all based on how people filled out their census documentation. So it's, we did not, we did not do anything to create this data. We, the consultants literally went to the census and pulled it right out, so it's all based on how people filled out their census documents.
So this is 2015 census?
I believe with the, the existing conditions report, we said the 2015 census, the, I think it was the 2012 American survey and the 2015 special census, where information was available. A lot of this, in this level of information, I believe, did not come out of the 2015 census. I think it was, a lot of this information mostly came out of the 2010, because that's where they got into this level of detail with the census.
So that's really important, and I would recommend that we put that on the slides, saying the source, you know, listing the sources, because I believe that travel characteristics have changed in seven years, but it's a good baseline.
And the, the source information is listed in the document itself. Again, for this presentation, they, you know, they, they pulled out some figures, but certainly make sure that that gets updated.
Yes.
Also, I'll provide each of you a copy of the existing conditions report that has way more information, if you really want to.
Because we love that, yes, thank you.
I'd like to print that out and make sure it's in your box. And I'm looking at the report now, and I think it's kind of a color, and it's 15.7 is here, just for clarification, sorry to be on the screen.
Yes.
It's much clearer in the report that I'm looking at, so 37% is what is the other, which again, is picking up here, Pittsburgh and Clayton, you know, anywhere else. But I'll get this printed out and for each of you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And in chapter two, in, in your draft plan, also, as was mentioned, provides a lot more detail. And I'm, I'm sorry about the kind of similarities in color, because I was even making that mistake between the town and other. So let's chat about roadway. So chapter three is all about roadways, and there certainly was kind of a process within a process that we use to develop the roadway recommendations, again, trying to understand how the town is growing, comparing that to an understanding of the characteristics of the corridors throughout the town, and understanding of kind of this, this need, this, this desire to increase multimodal options and provide more complete streets where it makes sense in the town. And then there's kind of this other thing off to the side that is land use, and making sure that, that the roadway recommendations recognize how land use is evolving and changing. And, you know, certainly, to your point, that, that's been occurring for, for years, if not decades. So I mentioned that, you know, one of the, the tools that we use, one of several tools, is the regional travel demand model. So what we're showing here is population employment within the existing 2010 transportation network, 2010, sounds like years ago, and, and that's a valid point. One of the things that, you know, the, the NPO is doing is working to, to update their travel demand model with a more recent base year. But one of the ways that we try to kind of calibrate it to existing conditions and kind of, and understanding that there are committed projects that, that the town has either in design or under construction, and those projects will have an impact on congestion in the town. So in the report, we, we do show kind of this, this 2040, our Horizon year being 2040, which is also based on the travel demand model. But how does congestion change in 2040 if we, once we implement these projects that are, you know, have funding committed? And if you kind of compare and contrast the maps, you do start to see congestion reduction on Mooresville Carpenter Road, Aviation Parkway, McCrimmon and NC 54, which is great. You know, that, that's an improvement to, to where you would be if those projects weren't committed. But I don't think there's a transportation plan out there that aspires to change all of the red on a congestion map to green. It's not feasible, and in some cases, it's not even in your best interest to, to have kind of completely free-flowing, because transportation is competing with, with other things for limited right-of-way, limited space. I'll pause there. Any kind of questions about that, that we need to kind of take into consideration before we come back?
Well, we've been briefed a couple times now about doing a grade separation at airport and at aviation. Are those including the 2040?
In, in terms of, are they included in the, kind of these committed projects?
Well, just for modeling, do you even, do you consider that of use or no?
Benjamin, I think I had a comment.
I can address that. So with the modeling work that was done as part of the, as part of this effort, for the modeling, they're showing the, for example, this map, they're showing with committed projects, they, they actually took all the projects that were in the, so the 2040 model, it is, it's built upon multiple layers. And so the 24, the 2040 regional model itself includes all the, you know, includes those grade separations and everything in it. What Kenley Horn did as part of the modeling effort for this, for the plan, they actually went through and removed all those projects that didn't have funding committed to them. So this map only is, only takes into account the projects that are currently funded in the STIP. So the, the grade separation at Airport Boulevard would not be in there. Airport Boulevard extension would not be in there. The grade separation, any grade separation Aviation Parkway would not be in there. It's only, the committed projects that are in this model in output are only the committed projects that have actually been funded either by the town or by DOT in the STIP.
Okay, I get that. But when they come and brief us about aviation, for instance, they would say, we modeled it and you're going to need this. We're sorry to tell you this. So you're going to have to, these are the three options.
So, and with that modeling work, that, that was using the same model, they just did different, a different model run to show that it was needed. But as you can see from this, you know, from, from this map that's in the plan, that may not be needed. You know, based on the colors that are on that map. And so that's something we can certainly, as we move into looking at the recommendations section, that's certainly something we can have further discussion about.
Thank you.
Does, sorry, does this include the TOD?
I'm sorry?
The commuter rail station at McCrimmon and 54? Is that part of your process? Because that's committed, right?
Right. The, I, I think the challenge with that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the fact that it's not a roadway improvement?
Right. So the
They'll generate traffic in that space.
And it's transit.
So the, the TOD would be accounted for in some of the socioeconomic data that goes into the back, into the backbone of the model. One thing, you know, this model is a few years old. There actually, we were hoping to be able to use the latest model in this effort. It just wasn't quite ready. And it's still not quite ready. But this model, the base year is 2015 or 2010?
2010.
So the model, this model has base year 2010, which means we last gave the SE data that is this model based, is based off of, we would have given them that information about 2013. So I can't, I don't know that the TOD was quite taken into account as part of the SE data that they based on. With the SE data, a lot of, or the socioeconomic data that they use, that they put into the backbone of the model, that's looking at, at current and existing employment and socioeconomic data, where people live. And then it, it does ask, they do, as part of that effort, they ask local municipalities to, to give them some information on what's in our plans at that point. And we're always very careful to make sure we only give them what's fully adopted. And so based on when we had put in this information, I don't know that our TOD plan was actually adopted at that point. So it's probably not taken into account. It will be taken into account with this, like, with this newer model that's getting ready to come out that Campo will be based in their 2045 NTP on. So it's, unfortunately, the, this is a little bit out of date, but it still is a, a good base year, and we can still build off of it.
So do we need to do an amendment? Because we know the TOD will be going in. We know the transit and Morrisville is a big part that we are getting a train station. And you're asking us to get this approved by the end of the year. And so how does this all play into?
For the transportation plan itself, the TOD doesn't, doesn't make a huge bit, a huge difference as far as the, the modeling work that was done. We did, luckily, our, when looking at this map, it includes our committed projects. So a lot of the projects that would be needed to support the TOD, the grade separation at McCrimmon, the widening of 54 in that area, the widening of McCrimmon in that area, those are all committed projects. So they're already taken account, taken into account. So the TOD question is going to be a bigger question for the land use plan than really for the transportation plan.
Just so that I'm clear, so you're saying that in that image here, that it did take into consideration the grade separation at McCrimmon?
Yes, yes.
So I think from that standpoint, it's important for the model. And again, TOD is not going to have an impact regionally. As much as making sure that was in there. So I think it's okay at this point.
So we haven't gotten to the transit part of it, but I felt, just looking at the plan in my first pass, that it was very thin. And we'll revisit that when we get to that section.
So your, your question is actually a good segue, because I think one of the, the unique things that Ben and the town did as part of this process was to tap into some of the, the, the regional land use model that's in place, the community vis model. And it kind of did some scenario planning for three of the corridors that are most likely to experience change over time. This definitely wasn't a replacement of your existing land use plan. We hope that it'll help inform the creation of your, your land use plan update, which we know that you're getting ready to undertake. But it, it was just a corridor approach that allowed us to kind of contemplate, you know, if, if, if we do something different in these areas from a land use perspective, what is the impact on transportation? So I, I mean, as you can see, there were, there were three corridor, corridors that were selected, kind of in consultation with, with you all, the PCV and staff. Kind of the, the end result of that, and I know you, you got a little bit more detail at your last meeting about the scenario planning process. We, we kind of did a qualitative and quantitative report card, if you will, that shows how two different alternatives for those three corridors performed against a baseline condition. And you start to see kind of those guiding principles that I introduced earlier kind of show up here as well. So this was a, a good process. The, the arrows, there's, there's spreadsheets, there's kind of data that's existing behind that. And I think this would be a good example of, of something that, again, could, could be evaluated in a little bit more detail as you are kind of contemplating changes to your, to your land use plan and your, your future land use map. So there's, there's just kind of a detailed report card for that. That really goes into detail on four of the six guiding principles. So the, the, the recommendations from a roadway perspective are kind of shown in a corridor level and then for intersections. So what we're showing here are the recommended thoroughfare improvements. If you, if your eye kind of goes from corridor and the extents to the improvement type, you'll see access management, just very limited new location, and then widening projects. So these are the corridor recommendations that were kind of developed based on input from the public and kind of a review of the data that we had at our disposal. And so, so they're shown there. The plan also shows intersection level improvements.
Jonathan, could you go back to that one for a second?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to make this too much more busy, but it might be helpful to have some indication as to state road versus town road.
Okay.
And thus, might give us some indication of the funding, you know, whether it's
The weighting of it.
Yeah, just.
Kind of what, what, what opportunities you have from a funding perspective based on the ownership of the road?
Correct.
And if I can make a quick clarification or comment, on that list, if you look, the Emily Nonstate Road is international drive. That'll actually be removed as widening. We're, we, we are working with consultants to probably, to look at modifying that recommendation to, to not widen it, but just to keep it essentially as a three lane section it is. So if that one's removed, they would all be state roads on this list. And as far as the, some of the funding and some of that information, that is later on in, in the reports. There's some information later on, chapter three for it, but then there's also more information about costs, both a little bit in chapter five and then in the appendices on the project sheets. They have the, the planning level costs for all these projects.
Okay, there may be, there may be a note on here, if you take off that one, that they're state roads. Because I think people do look to us to improve. They don't care if it's a town or state road, but we obviously have to.
A suggestion too, maybe, is the, the segment of NC 54 to Weston Parkway, it seems 2.39 miles. But would there be some advantage to breaking that up? Because if we know we're, they're looking at grade separating at airport and at aviation, could you make a, a segment in between those two? Where maybe it's feasible then to do that, that phasing of that project versus waiting on a bigger project? Because I know in the past, when, when the committee sat down in 2008, that was the answer was, well, we can't fix 54 because it's too long, it's cost too much money. So the answer was, we break it down into segments.
And that certainly is a recommendation that we're looking at, I think, and will continue working with consultants to probably get some more, get some more detailed language in the plan about, you know, especially for some of these large or more expensive projects like that, break them up. We are, you'll see with the, with the Airport Boulevard, that is part of the recommendation for that, it would be the phase. And I would, I would agree with you. I think NC 54 would be another good project directly in phasing. So we'll, we'll certainly work with consultants to get some of that information in there.
So are these all funded? Like, because I know the Poplar Pike to McCrimmon, the Lou Steven is funded, McCrimmon Parkway to, so some of them are funded. Can we have some kind of an asterisk or double asterisk, so which are funded versus not funded and like a kind of a thing? So at least we know, because some of them are already stipulated funded for 2021, 2022.
I think also on that point, if, if something's already funded and on a map, why is it on this list? If it's already, it's already been recommended and it's already happening. So why are we stating the obvious?
Correct. And that's one of the comments that staff has made
Okay.
early on. So we'll, we are working with the consultants to try and modify this. And, and that's one of the questions that I think we've been talking about with staff and consultants. And it's good to hear the council feedback is whether to, to show the funded projects even in the plan or, or just recognize them as funded or not. So we'll certainly look at some different ways to, to show those, but make sure it's clear that they're, that the projects that are funded are funded. And these are the projects we need to look at. A lot of that information is, will be, be pulled out with the prioritization that you'll see a little bit later on in the presentation where we, we pulled out the projects that are funded. And really, for the prioritization process, looked only at the projects that are not funded.
Okay.
I think the other reason it's important to show the dollar value is, and maybe the mayor already alluded to this, is people don't really care about whether it's a town road or state road, but there's still a lot of concern about the traffic in Morrisville. So just showing the dollar value helps show, you know, what investments we've already made. And then also the reality of, you know, there's only so much we can invest at one time unless we do bonds or, you know, work, get Campo or lab funding, things like that. So I think from the plan, I would say I'd like to see some dollar figures in there.
Okay. So, so the other thing to kind of supplement this, this view of corridor improvements are intersection level improvements. And the, the level of detail is a little bit less in terms of what these particular improvements are. And, and that's partly by design. We know that these intersections need to be improved. But kind of at this level, we're not at a place to suggest number of turn lanes, that kind of level of detail that would be kind of explored as these projects kind of go into more detailed planning and design.
So in this, this, this is just the intersection level improvements, right? You gave the list of it. Can you also give a small description, what was the driving factor? And for like a, a two liner, for each one of them, what was, what is the factor and indicator? Which was from your point of view?
Like why, why they were kind of selected?
Yes. Because it would be very important for us to understand was, was, was it staff driven? Was it the, the public driven? Or what was the, the need of it? Was it the circulation point of view?
Yep. And I think here in a second, when, when we talk about the prioritization of these intersection projects, you'll start to see how the ones that were selected aligned with, you know, one or more of the, the guiding principles, which doesn't directly answer your question, but kind of gives you an insight into, to why some of these were selected. But I think to your point, you know, talking about how the list was generated to begin with.
Yes, since we have already narrowed down this list, so it will be easy for us to go very specific on each one.
One, that note to kind of align with the last slide, you know, we may want to take a look at this. For example, with the Town Hall Drive and Carolina Street Extension, and we talked about not really those that are already DFI funded with that project. You know, it's virtually funded as part of the DFI project at this point. So
If they're committed.
It may not be included instead, you know, those get listed separately. And another question that I think I've had, that I've had multiple apps kind of figured out there is, what is an intersection improvement? Is it a traffic signal, you know, is it, you know, crosswalks, is it pet heads? Those are the things that additional information is needed to kind of inform, decide, future decisions.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, and Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the list that, that you see here, when, when we're talking about intersection improvements, we're, we're talking about things that, that enhance capacity and throughput for the intersections. So something like pet heads probably kind of falls below that threshold?
Yeah, for, for this specific list, the, it is primarily looking at turn lanes and modifying intersections, usually by widening or adding turn lanes and revising maybe the signals. But I know Courtney has brought that point up, and it is a good point. We will work with the consultants to add some more information into this section and the section, chapter five, which is the recommendations section to clarify, you know, give, if nothing else, at least give examples of what some of these intersection improvements are. And then one of the big recommendations that would be coming out of this in the action plan would then be, as, as council decides to start trying to tackle some of these intersection improvements, the first step would be doing a study to figure out what, what intersection improvements are truly needed. Because that can change over time. So we don't necessarily want to, want to put us into a box at this point saying, these are the only intersection improvements that, that should be done. But we want to, we want, the purpose is to say, with some improvements, these intersections will help with moving throughput, will help with throughput as so far as what those improvements are. There may be multiple improvements at different price points or different costs that we can consider. So as we move forward, once the plan's adopted, then, you know, part of the action plan would be, as we decide to do an intersection improvement, first step would be to do a little bit of an engineering study, figure out what's the best improvement and where are we at the cost.
Okay, so this plan was never intended to give us that kind of detail then?
No, no, the, a big, one of the overarching goals of the plan was to, you know, really maintain as much flexibility as possible. So, and knowing that, that conditions change. So we certainly don't, you know, we didn't want to try and put ourselves into too tight of a box on some of this stuff. So some of these intersections are fairly simple to look at and figure out pretty quickly what needs to be done. And we have ideas, you know, over time, through, through driving through town and talking to engineers and DOT stuff, there's, we know for, for several of these intersections, we already know what improvements really would be needed. So it's not necessarily that the town would have to spend a lot more money to figure that out, but we would certainly need to get those improvements designed.
And I mean, there's, there's 13, if I count correctly, intersections that are shown here. And kind of just understanding kind of the, the challenge of implementing those kind of in short order. We know that, that some of those are likely to be 15, 20 years out, maybe even. And, and so I think to Ben's point tonight, kind of use the CTP to, to, to put you all in CTP to, to, to put you all in, in the town in a box and say, this is what's needed, with the understanding that kind of those needs are going to look very differently once funding i- is allocated for these specific locations.
And, and one more point to make on this, which we'll probably work with consultants to, to work through this and it may actually cut this list down, is that if you look on this list, several of these intersections are part of projects that are already funded. And so the intersections would be, you know, ideally would be fixed as part of those projects. So some of these intersection projects would actually fall off. So it's, it's actually less than 13, I think. And the, if you take all of our committed projects and assume they're fixing the intersection as well, you're down to maybe six or seven.
So, so actually I would, it would help to keep it on the list and put an asterisk because it doesn't fall off the radar, because these are important intersections and always good to know that it's getting fixed. Then take it off the list saying, you know, instead of like, people say, what happened to that? So at least we know that it's part of that road improvement and it's getting fixed and it's funded. So that way it's easy to quantify as part of that project intersection, it's getting worked.
Okay. We can certainly do that. It's a good, it's a good point.
I have a comment about, I know during the E50, when we looked at the school, we identified the left-hand turn lane from Parkside Valley onto Davis Drive is set, something that is, would qualify for this intersection improvement or no, that?
Those are the types of things.
My apologies. Those are the types of comments that we're looking at now. Do we go ahead and add that back on? Because it's currently not funded.
Right. And we know there's a problem. We've seen the data.
And we can definitely talk about. And that's where it's going to get a little more AEP. So we've had surveys, we've had different houses, and you may not have had one person comment on that. So it's not at all on the consultant's radar. In that respect, fully, yeah, there's, everything's tabbed on the table. Yeah, just going in regards to comments, since this is a third public drive.
And that's, that's going to be the benefit of our next work session, when we're literally at the table, kind of working around these maps.
Okay. And then the backend one on that one is Louis Stevens. I know that, but is there a right-hand turn to get onto Louis Stevens from Parkside Valley? Otherwise you'll have people trying to get on and backing it up because they can't make a left, right-hand turn onto Louis Stevens.
And we can, we can look at that. We'll have to look at the DOT plans for Louis Stevens and see what they're proposing there. But, but yeah, one, with this list, a lot of this list is based off of model runs. And especially with the Davis-Parkside Valley intersection, the model, again, is very regional. So that, that improvement doesn't really help the Davis Drive through flow. It's, it's more of a Parkside Valley. It helps Parkside Valley. The model doesn't take that into account very well, which is why it didn't really pop. But those are the type of things that we need, you know, that's why we need the public input and input from council and PZB to add those in and, and make it, so that council can then make it a priority moving forward to get that improvement done.
Thank you.
Benjamin, on the, while we're on this slide, something like the Morrisville Carpenter Road grade separation, which we haven't really come to a council consensus on yet, you know, I don't want to assume it's going to go forward or it's not going to go forward. We just haven't had those in-depth discussions, so.
Right. And that's one that popped out to me very quickly. And that was one of the things that I wanted to, you know, I was hoping that we would have a chance to discuss here in that PZB is, you know, again, these are, a lot of these are based on the model. The model is saying, you need grade separation here. This is the town's policy documents and this is our chance once again to, to think about, do we, do we want to go on and put that in the document, go on, put it in the plan so we know, you know, we can tell folks it's in our plan, so it's probably coming? Or do we want to make the, you know, hard policy of, we don't want it, so we keep it out of our plan? Or is there an in-between? And I think we have, we can certainly look at some different options for how we address, especially that grade separation in here with, besides just either having it in or having it out.
All right. So it sounds like that's part of the staff review that's ongoing. Okay, very good. Thank you. Jonathan, you insisted on questions throughout, so.
No, no, no.
You might get your three-hour wish here. Be careful.
Let's get them out now. That's no problem with that. So, so the next thing we wanted to, to talk about is connectivity. And we know that while some of these projects are small, they, they're also kind of important to, to a lot of people. Because of these connectivity projects, in some cases are small, little segments that are part of kind of this bigger look at the, the town's network. We know that they're not going to compete well in traditional prioritization processes. So that's why they're kind of pulled out of this conversation of corridor improvements. We know that in, in some cases, these connections could be physical, or the, you know, making these connections can be kind of a, a physical project. I think in some cases, these connections also can, can be facilitated through policy. The, the one thing that we need to understand is that some of these connections might make sense for vehicles, while others might make sense for just a bicycle and pedestrian connection. But I, I think, you know, here it, it will, will be a good opportunity when, when we get back together in, in three or four weeks to kind of take a look at all of the recommendations, corridor, intersection, and these kind of connectivity and, you know, have a, have a discussion about that.
And same if you can give, like, the driving factors for these ones too, which would be very helpful.
Jonathan, it would be nice to know also on these, is this something that, you know, consultant looking at a map says this would be, you know, this is a straight line, so it makes sense, versus was this something that was community input driven? And I think ma- maybe once we get a more, better graphics on some of these comment cards and things like that, we probably answer our own questions. But it'd be nice enough, this was strictly something that, you know, Kimmel Horn.
Right.
Said, hey, this, you know, this makes sense.
Yeah, we, we can, we can try to do that. You know, I think in some cases, you know, during the, the development process, we know that, that certain streets are stubbed out as future connections. And, you know, as, as outsiders, those are, are some of those places that we, we kind of focus on and, and say, look, you know, during the develop, land development process, this, this was kind of noted as a future connection, so let's put it in the plan. But, but to answer your question, yes, we'll, we'll take a look at these in a little bit more detail. And, and when we come back in, in a few weeks, we'll, we'll talk to you a little bit about why certain ones were selected.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And factoring into that, I mean, I, you know, maybe the data is already there, but just looking at with some of these extensions, the, if they were to extend the, you know, do the, do the extensions, the impact it would have on residences within those neighborhoods of, you know, cut-through traffic. And also with, you know, other road projects like 54 being, you know, you know, at least many years, not many years, but, you know, eight to 10 years away. If those projects were built, how much traffic would be taken off of, you know, those roads through these extensions? And you're just looking at those, you know, factoring in these decisions, you know, looking at the data, that's going to be important to me to sort of decide which ones are ones that we should, you know, definitely improve in the short term versus long term. So.
Ben, did you want to, I, I know that, that you're working with, with Allison and Tim from a modeling perspective. I mean, do you have an update on how that's going?
Specifically for the?
Yeah, just kind of, I think to the point of using the model and origin and destination data to help us understand that.
So we are, the consultants are looking at some, doing some advanced modeling work for the next meetings to look at, on some of these connectivity projects to, to look at, get a better idea of where, where vehicles will be coming from and going to, to give you a little bit better idea, a better picture of, is this kind of, is this connectivity project going to attract people from all over to, you know, to funnel them through a neighborhood? Or is it really a true connectivity project where it's people that would already be going to areas around there? It just provides them yet another way to get to a, a destination without having to use 54, Davis Drive, or, or some of the other larger roads around some of these connectivity projects. So.
Okay.
When you do that, Benny, can you take into consideration public safety response time too?
Yes. Yeah. So we will, we'll try and see what, what information we can get from the, the Fire Department has a lot of that information. So we will, we'll see what we can get from them for the next council work session.
Also, are you taking into consideration the design of Morrisville Carpenter Road expansion? Because that probably wasn't an input, because it's very detailed and specific.
How so?
I, I'm looking at traffic flow from right in, right out. There's six different changes to the flow on the road. So it would affect how the road works.
Traffic patterns.
Okay. We'll take a look at that and, and see what we can do with that.
So we've kind of teased you with this notion that the, the projects that we've talked about have been prioritized. I, I think if, if you really dig into the report and, and this section in particular, you'll get a much better understanding of kind of the, the data and the numbers that went behind this prioritization process. So I'd encourage you, you know, in advance of the meeting to, to take a look at that section in particular. The, the prioritization process, just in general, is kind of a, a combination of quantitative and qualitative measures, again, tied back to the guiding principles. So what we're showing you here is there's kind of six criteria that were selected. And of those six criterias, at least two of the guiding principles are being referenced for those particular criteria. And, and what you'll find in the document itself, for instance, is what are the numbers behind crash history? How much do we give weight to a corridor that has a fatal crash reported in the last three years versus a corridor that only has a, a property damage crash? So that's the kind of information that, that you'll get in the document. You know, what, what type of bump does a project get based on the, the improvement to congestion? But once we kind of go through that prioritization process, well, let me pause real quick here. So the, the criteria that I mentioned, they, they are weighted in the plan. So we kind of reached out to the public and the PZB to kind of give us what, how they would weight those criteria. And you can kind of see the percentages there. The far right column shows you how that criteria was weighted in the CTP. And it's easy to notice that, that those percentages are a little bit different, though we, we would kind of point out that, that the order of magnitude in a lot of cases is similar. The reason that those were slightly recalibrated was to, you know, give notice that this is a comprehensive transportation plan. So there's this emphasis on being comprehensive in nature and to make sure that, for instance, transit routes, you know, get some consideration as we're prioritizing projects. Yes, sir?
So it begs the question, when you prioritize these, I guess if you did, because you said near-term and then midterm, which priorities set did you use? Yours or the public and P&amp;Cs? And is it beneficial, really, the question is, is it beneficial then to have two different weights, show those two different weights?
Yeah. So the, the prioritization that's reflected in the plan is the, the CTP weighting. I mean, Ben, you can answer this how you see fit. I would discourage you from showing two different prioritizations in the plan. I think the plan can kind of do what we're doing here and, and recognize that, that kind of there was this process. But I don't think you want to memorialize a plan with, with multiple prioritization processes.
Are you, are you relooking your prioritiz- prioritization then? Your percentages? I'm sorry. Are you relooking your percentages?
We certainly can do that. You know, that, the Planning and Zoning Board brought up the similar issue at their meeting, asking about the difference in weights. And as we told the Planning and Zoning Board, when, when staff and consultants got together to, to look through this particular issue, we did decide to, together to, to modify the weighting a little bit, because we know that, for example, transit is a, a major priority for the town. And we're, we're participating in the wait transit effort and, and we talk about transit quite a bit. Some council members more than others. But, so because we want, we knew that was such a priority for the town, we did want to give that a little bit more weighting than, than maybe what the public did. But if you look, there's still, the magnitude of the weighting is still shown as the public and the PZB input showed it to be, which was, you know, congestion. The public and PZB weighting, you know, all together was 68%. That still gets 40%. So that still gets a majority of the weighting. But we felt the trains really deserved more than 7%. Activity centers really probably deserved a little bit more than just 13%. Access to schools and community facilities really deserved a little bit more than, than 3%. But in the long run, I think even if you redid the prioritization with the weightings that the public and the PZB showed, you're not going to get a whole lot of difference in that, because these are weightings, they're not actual crit- the weightings don't have, the weightings are just taking the score from the criteria and then weighting it against 100 points. So you're, the, you're, you're not going to see a huge difference by choosing one or the other. It's more of a overall policy statement that, you know, with the, trying to make the plan comprehensive, but modifying the weightings a little bit to show that, you know.
Okay. Are you going to, you point on list, you, you might want to consider to list the scores. I don't know then, however you come to the conclusion. List those scores if you're putting out data.
So do we have like a, a chart for us to also weigh in, or just the public and the PZB weighing in?
The public and PZB weighting, I believe, does include, it, it actually does, and it's a misnomer on the side. I apologize for that. But it does include the town council input that y'all gave us at the, I believe it was late July or early August, one of those work sessions, when you gave, when you provided some input on the prioritization criteria. That is included in the public and PZB. So we conglomerate it, conglomerate it at all and use that as a guide to try and figure out what the, what, you know, and, modified a little bit to show the magnitude of the weighting, but use what the public and PZB provided to, as a base to, you know, what magnitude do things need to be weighted at?
Ben, remind me again, how, how did we poll the public and PZB and council to come to that?
Yeah. We had, that was where you did some of those exercises. I can't, I mean, pull up, I can't remember exactly what the exercises looked like now.
I can't either. That's why I'm asking.
That's the reason I'm curious.
Good point.
Was it the card?
Was it one of those where we were only allowed like three choices? Yes. And, and so constrained.
It was similar to that. The, it was, one of the exercises was an eight and a half by 11 sheet. And it listed the, it actually listed out the, the prioritization criteria. It had the symbols for the applicable guiding principles. And then it asked you to weigh one and two, your top two prioritization criteria. And then one of the other, and then you had the key corridor exercise. And I believe there's one more, there may have been, oh, there, there was a, another prioritization exercise that, the, the pyramid with the one, two, three, and the dot, for the public, we did the colored dots. And for y'all, I think we just had you draw in. So those were the two prioritization exercises.
So we really weren't given the ability to, we were constrained on what we could choose? So?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's the, what's the town staff's weighing in as, as compared to these two? How, how far are the town staffs weighing?
So the, the CTP weighting up there is, is what was, is, was based on the consultants and the staff working together.
Okay. So, so that's consultant includes the staff together. Okay. So I was just curious how, if it was a three-way or okay, two-way. So it was not clear in that slide?
It can be modified. So keep that.
No, no. I just wanted to know if it was, there's, you had an opinion other than the consultant, because clearly stated consultant team suggestion weighing. So I thought that you had a different weight, that you had an opinion other than the consultant in, in one way. So looking at an average.
Some ways we do have an opinion, like, you know, that, you know, future congestion reduction is important.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, but I think supporting transit routes is also important. And that's where you kind of have to balance it out. But if you think the weight, you know, if crash history is not important at all, you can take that down. You know, it's, it's those things where, you know, it's open for discussion. So if there's any strong concerns with the background. So if there's any strong concerns, we can back away.
I think one thing, just in the, on the side of the staff and the consultants, this, this weighting that they came up with, I think, is much more aligned with what you see at, let's say, Campo discussions and funding discussions, that they look at, they look at these elements the same way. There's weighting and there's scores and things like that. So while the average, you know, while us or the citizens may discount cash, crash history, I think it means a little bit more when it comes to, you know, the folks at Campo and NCDOT. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, and that is actually one of the things we looked at when we were going through this exercise was, you know, we looked at what the public and town council and PZB put in in their comments. But then we also looked at what, you know, at NCDOT and what Campo used because the goal, one of the goals we talked about with the consultants for this, especially for the prioritization and the weighting, is that ideally our prioritization criteria will be, will be such that the projects that come out as high priorities also would then be able to be funded by Campo.
Exactly.
And would be high priorities for Campo too. So we wanted to, that's where we did want to try and match them, but then also take into account, you make transit more of a priority, make our activity centers more of a priority. So that's, that's where you saw, where, why you see some of the modifications.
I think that makes a little more sense.
We would like things funded, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. Jonathan, just, it's about quarter of eight now, we typically break around eight o'clock. Is there a natural break in your slides? I know you're about halfway through.
Yeah, let's, let me kind of talk real quick about kind of the tiers. And then I've got one slide on strategic corridors and then we'll break right before we talk about active transportation.
Very good, thank you.
And honestly, there's not a whole lot to say kind of in this venue about kind of the way that the tiers broke down. I think that's going to be a great thing for us to talk about in a few weeks. Just kind of which projects hit in the near term, the midterm, and then these long-term priorities. And I'm glad that kind of the conversation was brought up about, you know, making sure that the priorities that come out of this plan compete well against the priorities that are coming out of Tufay Barinas or the Town of Cary's similar plans.
And Jonathan, what is your definition of near term, midterm, and long term?
Yeah, that's a great question, do you know that?
I know, I know DOT speaks in different.
Yeah, they do.
I think that's another area where, I know we and staff had talked about needing some more information for this is to try and figure out, you know, come up with some good, with a good recommendation of, you know, some definitions for that. One reason we went with near, mid, and long versus, you know, one, two, three, four, five, seven is that we still, again, wanted to build in that flexibility and say, this group of projects probably should be done sooner rather than this group, but still provide that flexibility so that council, you know, the town and council can say, okay, of these near-term priorities, you know, we think as a group, this one is better even though it may be, you know, fifth on the list. So, and we wanted to, we have a lot of data behind this information, but we wanted to keep some of that in the weeds, stayed out of the plan and just say, you know, these are the near, mid, and long-term priorities to provide us the most flexibility.
I just, I know when talking to the public, we talked about how, you know, we're excited about all these projects that have been moved up on the radar and now they're only, you know, six years away and that, like, we can't wait six years for these improvements. So just some guidance as to.
We'll work on that and I'm getting some better guidance for what near, mid, and long mean.
Set expectations.
Right, right.
And to be fair, these slides are just alphabetized, right? It's not like the first on the near term is the first priority.
Right, they're, it's just.
They're buckets. Okay.
I have a question, like, it really would be too much to ask because this, I know, Mark, in Campo, the discussion always comes about, everything's about funding. All these projects are good, but if you take, say, Davis to Morseville Carpenter, for example, the weightage is always given, right, like the crashest or existing congestion and those kind of things. How hard is it for each, like, we have this 13 intersections of like certain road projects that we are coming up with? How, how much does it rank in each of those crashest or those kind of things? Do you have that calibration, at least some kind of a thing, at least we know what we are up against?
Sure.
And those standards?
I mean, that, that information is readily available, I mean, it's sitting in a spreadsheet on our computer.
So that, that would be wonderful for us to even visualize and see it. That, that will be wonderful information too.
Yeah, I think the, kind of, the conversation is then, you know, do you want that reflected in the report or is that kind of a technical data that you all want to?
Yeah, something to have it in the back pocket because it's always good to know what we are up against, you know, when we.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a note to have that when we come back.
So, Jonathan, I'm sorry, one other, so are we, we're going to talk about this in a couple of weeks when we have our more detailed discussion.
The, the lists themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the, the better option, do you agree?
Okay, all right.
If you have a specific concern, I think we should probably put it on the table now.
Well, so, just, and I didn't look at, at this list with that in mind, that I'd ask a bunch of questions, but I just, on the long-term roadways, for instance, there's the Town Hall Roundabout. That's, we're hoping to build that in the very near future. So I'm not quite sure how that got on the long-term roadway priorities list.
And again, a lot of that was, again, you know, you're, you're seeing this information, you know, not too long after staff received it, so we're, we're still going through and scrubbing it. A lot of these smaller projects ended up being sort of long-term because there's not, there's not necessarily any really good data, there's not a model written for it to be on there. So the Town Hall Roundabout, it's a good idea, it will, you know, we, we need it for our town center, but it's not like it helps with traffic one way or another from a model perspective. So that's sort of how, how they, how these projects originally got put into these buckets. And so that's certainly something we can look further at on the October 17th is, you know, we, we have these buckets that were really done based on model data. Now realistically, do we want to ship projects between buckets for the actual plan? We can certainly do that.
Fox Love Drive alignments, well, now, did you understand, they had a draft DFI plan that was part of the information that was given to them as background. They had no idea that the DFI plan is moving forward. So they were given background data, but they are.
No timeline, right?
Yeah, so we settled a new, a lot faster than they given the information, so that was a lot that was coming into play.
I would say, I know, I had, I have a short list of areas that I had, you know, one of the more details on and some of them are on these lists, but I don't know that we necessarily want to do that right now versus before we leave here tonight, that, you know, give all the council members an opportunity to, you know, we all have our, our list or comments. Is that okay with everyone? Because I know, I, I have questions about some of these in particular, but I don't want to necessarily slow down the momentum.
Could we do them at the end?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking.
That sounds good. So the, real quick, before we let you all have a break, there, there's a section in the document that talks to strategic corridors, I think in some respects. Maybe demonstration corridors is a good term to use here as well. And this was just kind of our opportunity to, 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 to look at a few corridors in the town with a little bit more detail. I know the, the colors on the bar chart and the pie chart that we showed earlier were a little bit hard to discern. One of the things that I'll point out on this particular slide, the, the key corridors where you see priorities, safety, congestion appearance, don't get confused between those colors and the colors that you see on the map itself.
That's what I was doing.
You had me confused.
Yeah, so those, the colors on the map are really just there to help you kind of distinguish the different corridors themselves. They're not related to the, the little pyramid, if you will. But, you know, I would, I would encourage you in, in the draft plan to, to kind of look at these strategic corridors, both in terms of the information that is presented and how that information is presented. Any questions about that?
Just a general question, you didn't consider, I guess, McCrimmon's extension? To me that as a, as a key corridor, the one we're building?
To us, it's important, but it's funded.
But if I can address that, one of the things we did look at for these strategic corridors is we tried to, we tried to look at roads where there may still be either heavy development or, or needed improvements. And so we did talk about McCrimmon Extension. And originally, when we actually started with strategic corridors, we did have it on, we had the extension on there. One of the things that consultants recommended as part of, as part of rolling everything up into the plan was to shorten these strategic corridors for the plan purposes because with the strategic corridors, if you look in, if you read through the plan, the strategic corridors have some very specific recommendations associated with them, usually dealing with improvements. McCrimmon Extension is going to be done. Once we build it with, once DOT builds their section, we finish our section, it's going to be four-lane median divided. We don't really see that as needing to go to six or eight lanes in the future necessarily. So we really wanted to focus our strategic corridors on areas where, you know, we know there needs to be work, further work done, or there's, for, for example, Town Hall Drive with the DFI work and the, you know, future town center, that could really change Town Hall Drive as a corridor, especially for the lower section. So that's, that's why the strategic corridors look the way they do.
What about, like, I've seen all these intersections, but the intersection between Church Street and 54, that's the main clog that we see. I have not seen, is it part of a different, I've seen from Lewis Steven all the way to 54 as one plan, but we have a main clog between Church Street and 54. I know we are coming up with the turn lanes, but every morning traffic, we are having that particular, like, half a mile clog. Is that getting addressed in our transportation plan? Or is it part of the bigger intersection from Lewis Steven to 54?
So the, that is a, that intersection would be addressed both as part of the bigger plan with some of the, on the roadway recommendations. And then as far as the strategic corridors, that would be included in that McCrimmon Parkway strategic corridor that's shown, would be, you know, it's not only the, the roadway, but it's also all the intersections along it.
So.
When you say 54 and Church Street, what are you talking about?
I mean, it's like, where the quickest thing is like.
But on McCrimmon?
Church Street and 54.
He's actually talking about Church Street, I think, the whole length of Church Street, correct?
Like, that's two lanes?
Yeah, he wants to make it four.
The intersection of McCrimmon and Church Street.
Okay, I thought you said 54 and Church, which doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, McCrimmon and Church Street intersection 254, that particular intersection is always.
So that's already funded to be.
Not now, that's only, the turn lanes are funded, no, no, no.
The whole, the whole McCrimmon from 54 to Davis is funded.
Is a project.
As part of the $250 million DOT is committed.
But what, for 2020?
It's in, in the near, the near term, I would say.
Within 15 years.
15 years is.
No, before that.
Maybe less than that.
Less than that. So it's part, there's funding from McCrimmon from 54 to Davis as part of the committed funding. So that's, you're talking about the, you know.
The Church Street from Morseville Carpenter Road to Hobson or whatever, you know, that is not.
That's, that is.
No, no, I'm not looking for that, just from.
McCrimmon, which is already done.
From Davis to 54, you're saying?
Yeah, that's already, that's already done.
So what, is it in the near term or?
That's, it's funded in the step, for, I believe, construction funding is starting in 20, around 2023, 2024 timeframe. So the McCrimmon widening and the McCrimmon grade separation are actually now funded on the same schedule altogether by, by NCDOT, and that's fully funded and committed. And that will include work at all the intersections as needed.
That's, that's a long time.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and take a 10-minute break here, we'll meet back here at 8:05, if that's okay? Thank you all.
So we're going to turn our attention to chapter four, which is alternative travel modes. One of the things that we wanted to point out with this particular chapter is there is a little bit more of an educational component to this chapter. So you'll, you'll see that there's a discussion about the benefits of active travel. Those benefits are far-reaching and I think, you know, this town in particular understands those. The, the education also extends to making it very clear about the different types of on-street bicycle facilities that are recommended. So when we talk about on-street bicycle facilities in this plan, we're referring to bicycle lanes, which have dedicated space for bicyclists with pavement markings to delineate that space. We talk about paved shoulders, which is a little bit less of a delineation of that space, but at least provides safer accommodations for bicyclists. And the last one is a shared lane marking, which just brings awareness to motorists that bicyclists are in the area. So when you kind of open up the map and look at it in a little bit more detail, you'll see that, that we're showing existing and proposed facilities. So existing bike lanes, existing paved shoulders, and then the corridors that are proposed for bike lanes, share lane markings, and these wide outside lanes. The, those on-street facilities are supplemented with off-street bicycle and pedestrian facilities. You know, I, I think it's important here for us to, to be very clear about kind of the terminology. So when we talk about multi-use paths or multi-use trails, they're inclusive of greenways and side paths. The distinction here is side paths are occurring kind of adjacent to an existing facility. So you see that in the cross-section drawing, whereas a greenway are on independent alignment and a lot of cases follow kind of natural features to get people around town or wherever they need to go. So again, just as, this particular map is showing existing and proposed facilities and it's nice, I think it's a nice distinction here in this map to, to show what's adjacent to an existing facility and what is on independent alignment. One of the things that we're, we're trying to do with the CTP is to provide a little bit of guidance to, to the town on kind of how different things should be designed. So you'll find in the report, there's this table about guidance for multi-use path design. The, what you see across the top of this table, city and town commercial, city and town residential, those are kind of roll-up categories for the regional land use model, regional land use plan, if you will. And so what we're, we're trying to suggest is that as multi-use paths go through different land use contexts, that design should be a little bit different, whether it's the surface treatment. You know, how do we accommodate kind of these crossings where, where crosswalks and pedestrians are crossing? Lighting, and then where does it make most sense to invest in amenities on your multi-use path network? So that, that table is really just kind of a, a guidance, if you will.
If you go back to that one, like, would you be able to associate certain parts of our town with those?
Categories.
Like, city and town commercial, that's pretty much like east and north of 54 generally. If you could have the experts sort of help associate, that would make this more useful, for me at least. Like, do we have any rural? Would you consider any of our town rural still?
I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so, but. Let me make a note of that.
It'd be helpful to know if we have any mismatches with our current projects. That might be a good place to start.
Before we've actually constructed them, you mean?
Well, not to undo what we've done, but to understand if we did it, you know.
Appropriately.
Appropriately, and then we can have lessons learned for next projects.
Yeah, one of, one of the, the good things about, you know, putting this type of table in your plan is we know that the, the land uses, the future land uses are likely to change over time. And in your case, they're likely to change. over time. And in your case, they're likely to change pretty soon, given that you're, you're getting ready to go through that process. So, you know, the, the CTP will always be up to date with kind of your, your land use plan because it's referencing these kind of roll-up categories. But I think to your point, we need to make sure that, that there's an understanding of, of kind of the snapshot in time, you know, where those places are. And then if, if it is true that, that rural is not part of the town, then why show it in the table? It just kind of creates confusion.
Right. I mean, we probably still have a few unpaved streets, but very, very few.
Yeah. Well, and, and again, this is just dealing with the, the multi-use paths. So this isn't kind of a, a street design guideline. This is for your, for your trail network.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we did do some prioritization for the bicycle and pedestrian network. The key thing here is that it's for independent multi-use path projects only. So those projects that might be a side path to a, a larger roadway project, we didn't prioritize that because they're going through the prioritization process that, that occurs with the roadway projects. The other important distinction here is that it is different from your roadway prioritization in, in both content and how it's kind of presented. For instance, you're not going to see kind of a tiered approach to, to greenways in the plan. It's just kind of, kind of what you see here, you know, is, is the, the multi-use path that's being evaluated, is it, how is it performing with connectivity? Is it, you know, serving particular activity centers? And the last one there is what's the feasibility of construction? We, we do talk about in the plan as well, what are potential funding opportunities for kind of this multi-use path network as well. Any questions about that? Yes, sir?
What's the private funding, and is this an inclusive list?
An inclusive list of funding?
Well, is it an inclusive list of all your pathways? Or, and then when you say Morrisville private, is that, who's going to, what's the private portion? Is that because it's in our UDO for a greenway and you're going to get a payment in lieu?
The, the private is referring to the fact that, that, that particular connection would, would be, you know, part of a, a larger private development. So it's going through green space. To answer your, your earlier question, though, this list is inclusive of the multi-use paths that are on, that are, are separate from any kind of roadway project. Does that make sense?
It does. I guess it's for staff and Crabtree Crossing. I know that that's a greenway connection by itself. It's always been on the list since 2008.
Right. And again, that's under construction with part, with the.
No, the, I'm sorry, the Crabtree Town Hall connection, the one that was put in there when the road was dropped.
And that is, they're working on adding that back into the Crabtree-Hatcher Creek Greenway project?
Oh, it can be added.
Well, I think they're.
Yeah.
It's in the project.
Well, to me, I always thought it was a high priority, so I, that's one I'd like to see reflect on this list.
We can certainly work on adding that in, but it, it is, it should be a funded project and, and constructive.
Correct.
Okay, so from Town Hall Drive to Crabtree, you'll, you'll see it. Okay. Because we had that discussion, it wasn't on part of the original plan, but. Okay, then, Millisette, is that one that we're going to consider adding?
And, and that's one of those that, well, it wouldn't necessarily be as part of this. That would be considered under those neighborhood connectors, probably, most likely. But that's something that, you know, that's one of the issues that probably will, will be a good item to discuss at the next work session. We can, if you have some, if you need information about it or data, we can certainly let us know, we can provide that. But that's another one of those probably discussion items. And I know the mayor wanted to bring some up, maybe at the end it's.
With the road, got it.
We can certainly add it to the parking lot list and, and make sure it's brought up at the next meeting. And, you know, that's one of those, I know that it's brought up about making a decision as.
What's the difference between the side path and the greenway?
What now?
What is the difference?
Sorry. What's the difference between the side path and the greenway?
So, and that.
You have a visual here.
We have, we're changing our, one of the things we're doing with this plan is we're changing our nomenclature a little bit to, to make it more clear-cut. In our current plan, if you look, in our current, both our transportation plan and, and our Parks Recreation Master Plan, we have greenways, multi-use paths, wide sidewalk, sidewalks. It's sort of all jumbled in together. And so what we've gone here, what we've gone to in this one is, we have a greenway, which is, which is really off-road, outside of a public, outside of a roadway right-of-way path. And then we have a side path, which is, takes the place of what we were previously calling multi-use paths or wide sidewalks. It is in the roadway right-of-way. It's a concrete path that's either eight, 10 feet wide or bigger. But it's, we're trying to clean up our nomenclature a little bit.
And is this a good place where we have a lot of orphan sidewalks, right? Like, we have been talking about prioritization. And so we are using this multi-use path prioritization. So how does our sidewalk prioritization fit in with these prioritization, sidewalk prioritization and greenway?
And that's something we're working with the consultants to reconcile and try and figure out how we, we get that information in there. Right now, the prioritization that the consultants have prepared for this section is focused really on those standalone, larger projects, greenways and side paths. We're, we're working with them. That's been one of the comments since, you know, how, how or will we fold in the sidewalk prioritization into this? The plan itself for, for this section is really looking at some of the bigger infrastructure when it comes to, and it's really primarily looking at that, at those side paths and those greenways. So even if sidewalk prioritization doesn't ultimately necessarily make it into here, it's still very important, and it will be, nothing else will, it'll be at least represented in here, probably either in the section or in Chapter 5. But those are usually much smaller projects and are focused on, you know, and a lot of those projects now, which, that's one of the things we'll be doing over the next few months, is going back through our existing prioritization policy in that construction list and looking, because a lot of those projects are now going to be picked up as part of DOT projects.
So, so can we at least help in one way? Because the, the main thing, I think, when we did our reviews and everything, is the connections in either way, in greenway or sidewalk, is connectivity, because many of the residents I talked to is, how can we go from place A, from, to place B in a bike or a walk? So that would be very good, either in greenway or a sidewalk, but not get stuck into this kind of, like, a priority list in, like, a greenway or sidewalk, if either or, that can connect from place A to place B through, without using the roadway network.
Right. And that is one thing, that this is discussed a little bit in this chapter, is what we call neighborhood connectors, which are filling in those little gaps or connecting neighborhoods to greenways. And those aren't necessarily in the, under the prioritization policy, but those are another thing that we're looking at. And there is still some work to do on this chapter. We do recognize that. We've been, you know, a lot of the comments that you're bringing up are things that the staff has brought up, but we will certainly keep noting these and, and talk more with consultants about, maybe beefing up the, this chapter on some of these things.
Okay, perfect. So I know that there was a discussion, or somebody mentioned transit when, when we were getting started. So the, the transit section here is kind of in, in three parts. There's kind of this recognition of the work that's occurred with the Wake Transit Plan, and Ben, obviously, is well-versed in that. You'll, you'll see a mention of future local service. Part of that is because there's funding opportunities that exist now that didn't exist when the plan was originally, or the, the last plan was created. And then the last thing, and we've talked about this today as well, and that's the support for the TOD at McCrimmon and 54. So we want to make sure in the transit section that, that we give some, you know, notice to that.
So.
Benjamin's going to let him speak, because he's going to answer all of our questions.
Then I'll go.
I may answer your question before you ask. So one of the first comments I had on this sec, on the, this section, back to the consultants, when I first saw the section, is that it did not include the, the other transit map that is on our website. So they've got to fold that map into the section as well. But that map solely shows the Wake Transit Plan routes. And it's been brought up also at the PZB. And what we've talked about within, and what I believe you'll see as the recommendation, at least from the consultants and probably staff, on this would be not necessarily to draw lines on the map at this time, but one, and it is in there in Chapter 5, one of the action steps is to look at a, you know, is to do a future study, future meeting, hopefully in the next year or two, of, you know, if there's, what additional transit service does Morrisville need, especially when it comes to trying to take advantage of that community funding area, pot of money that's in the Wake Transit Plan. We just didn't feel like it was a good idea to throw lines. I mean, we can throw lines on the map now, but really, it would, it would benefit us to, to do a study and, and get some more, some transit experts in, and really do a little bit more outreach even to our citizens to figure out what areas really would need to be served if we wanted to do some sort of circulator local service route. I have ideas, I'm sure council members have ideas, I know the PZB has ideas, but to really put ourselves in the best position to take advantage of some of that potential for future funding, I think it would benefit us to do a, to do a full study, focusing just on that question. So that's, that's in the recommendation section.
So I love that. I think that is important because at the current time, I think we're up to two bus stops. I think, yes. And. So with the map that you have provided, you show a circulator around, like, the Morrisville Carpenter Road, Davis Drive, and so forth. Is that the current route of the go-carry system? They just don't physically stop?
No. No, the map that is online, that will ultimately be as part of this, that's actually, that route is on the Wake Transit Plan.
Okay.
It's, it's not in the planned document yet.
Yeah.
It's not in the planned document itself. It was, it's in the, sort of, some of the background work they did. So that's a future local slash regional service that was, is really meant to circulate from the TOD around the outskirts of town and then get back out to the airport and back. So I believe it's a third, I believe in the plan, it's about a 30-minute headway service, meaning a bus would come every 30 minutes. But again, as you see, it only runs sort of along the outside of town. It's not a current route, it is a future. And so then, you know, if we, if council decides to move forward with the study in a future year, we would look at, is there maybe an additional circulator-type service that would connect some of these points so that you don't necessarily have to wait 30 minutes just for this one bus route?
So there's two parts of this transit that I'm looking for. One is, what's the baseline on the plan? Because of the Wake County, you provided that map. The other is the cost. So we currently don't have any cost for either bus service or rail service because we don't have it. But what is that incremental cost going to be to Morrisville to provide that service? It's a cost-sharing model, but yet, we need to understand that. So as we make these decisions about local circulators and so forth, we can make them in a way that's beneficial.
Right. And that's one of the reasons we didn't want to just throw a circulator line on the map, is because we don't know yet how the community funding area is really going to work.
Okay.
One of the studies that's underway, current, that I'm serving on the core technical team of, is a community funding area program management plan. And so that's another reason that I really, you know, my recommendation would be waiting and doing a study after we get that program management plan and know the rules of how the program's going to work, where the funding's going to be, is it truly 50% match, or, you know, and how much funding will really be available. We have ideas of what it could be, but a lot of that could change through this program management plan. So I think as staff, we would recommend, let's get, let's see what that program management plan ultimately is. And then we can follow up as a town, do our study, knowing more of the rules of the game, and be able to position us much better if we do want to move forward and, and try and do a circulator type service, knowing a lot better, having a lot more information about costs and whatnot.
That's very helpful, because I assumed the model was already established, and I felt like we were running against the clock, because it is going to be competitive. Once you do have those rules established, I'm sure the other towns will also have their ideas about what they would like, and there's only so much money, so.
The, the biggest problem with that community funding area model that was put into the Wake Transit Plan is it was, it was put in there, but not a, there's, there's some background data, but not a lot. So it threw out the 50% match. And then as far as finances go, they, they actually came up with, there's a financial model that back, that's the backbone of the Wake Transit Plan. For community funding area, they looked at the Wake Forest Circulator Service that's run by Go Raleigh, and essentially modeled that over 10 years. And that's how they came up with how much money. The problem is, based on that, there's only, in year 10 of the plan, there's $7 million for the community funding area. That's not going to provide 10 municipalities enough money to, to provide their encirculator-type service. So that's why they, that's why the T-PAC decided to do the program management plan. A, this, this idea was thrown out there with no guidance, so we need that guidance of how will this program even work. And then we're also using the program management plan to determine, do we need to put more money, do we need to ship money in that Wake Transit model, financial model, from other things into community funding to get more money in the program? And then two, how will that money be doled out? Is it going to be competitive? Is it going to be first come, first served? And so once we get that program management plan, we'll be in a lot better. We're still going to be probably, if we move, you know, if the council decides to do a study, we would still probably be one of the first towns to really take advantage of it, even if we wait, you know, a year after the program management plan comes out. So we're, we're not behind any ball at this point.
Well, that's good news, but it still sounds like it, it is not an easy negotiation to figure out all the variables and everything. So, very good. Thank you.
Benjamin, just one, one point of clarification. With, with the Wake Transit Plan, with the Wake Transit Plan, we are getting commuter rail and sort of the starter bus route. You know, that's, that, that's not costing Morrisville proper funding. We don't have to fund out of our taxes, this, kind of the starter kit.
Correct. At this point, that is, that's the, the understanding that we're going under.
Right, right.
There is a, there's also a major, major investment study, major corridor study that's going on, that's looking at commuter rail, that we'll have some more information. But at this point, the, the way the transit plan was done is, 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 it is meant that the municipality should not have to pay for, for the services that are shown in the transit plan.
Right.
Because we don't run transit. However, there may be some, you know, there may be some side costs for the town if we need to do some additional infrastructure, like sidewalk connections or whatnot. But generally speaking, with commuter rail being in the plan, the model includes money to build the stop, to build the train station. With the buses, the money's in the plan to provide the bus, and then to do some bus stops. But if we want, you know, if we wanted to do additional amenities or whatnot, and those are all questions that'll come down over the next couple of years.
And I think to Vicki's point is, we will have the opportunity, when we start getting these, you know, more detailed studies, to enhance what will be really a starter kit to, you know, so.
We might be adding a few more stops. I know that, you know, major shopping centers, senior centers, you know, there's interest. It's just a matter of prioritization. Yeah.
One more question on this, Ben, then. So you're, you're suggesting that this map be left kind of in this form, in the, in the final document with all this wording around it?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't, there's no, there's no indication of bus stops on here. Is that something we can add, or we don't even, can't even begin to suggest where they may be?
Again, we, we could start putting dots on the map, but the, the better would be to, you know, in the, in the recommendation language, all that will be pulled out as part of the.
To be hashed out.
As part of the route planning. It's, it's, really would be premature now to, to try and designate stops with, you know, for several reasons. One, these bus routes are probably still a couple of years away, and B, we're not going to be running. be running the bus, so we'll have say into it. We may not have full control. So, it's better that, you know, it's better for the plan, from the plan perspective, keep it high level, showing the routes, and then we'll make sure there's some good backup language in there about how the stops will be determined, how the town will work with the transit partners, and then also, you know, as an action step coming out, you know, have the town consider doing a study once a community funding area partner management plan's in place to look at, you know, potential additional circulator-type service.
Okay.
But to Liz's point, do we wanna put the Lisa McCrimmon Transit Stop on this map? Because...
That we could probably do, because that's...
Does that make sense to...
Yeah, I think that's a good...
That's a big enough policy thing that it would probably, that probably would not be a bad idea to just say, yes, this is here.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll work with the consultants to update that.
Okay.
McCrimmons more than Transit is.
Yeah.
I think they have it good for the T.O.
So, the last chapter is the action plan. So, again, this is kind of taking everything that is in the plan and trying to kind of put some structure to how things can get implemented. The action plan begins with some policy or program recommendations. The very last item on that list is the transit study that we just spent a few minutes talking about. I think the other thing that's not shown in the presentation, that's a very nice value add to the document, is to, is this table that shows you all of the policies and programs that are kind of in development or, you know, underway. So, these policies and programs are really to kind of supplement all of the infrastructure projects that you see in the map, whether they're roadway, bicycle, or pedestrian. Transportation technology, we wanna make sure that there's reference to that in the plan for a few reasons. One is to make sure that the town recognizes the current efforts that it's undertaken in terms of the coordinated signal system and the TDM programs that are in place. And then, just talk about, kind of at a high level, the emerging technologies for CV and AV, and how that'll affect the different elements of the plan.
Yeah, I had a question on that. I was actually gonna ask you a question about this, and you brought up the issue, so thank you so much. But I guess, as we look at autonomous vehicles and Morrisville's planning out, you know, in the 2040 plan, will be, will we be keeping up with what Secretary Atrogna is doing in terms of the policies of the state and how it's gonna affect...
Well, and if you look at the section of this plan, it's pretty much what it says is that, you know, we'll stay abreast of the information. There's not, at this point, there's not a whole lot for the town to do when it comes to CVs and CAVs. So, if you read the section, I mean, it's pretty high level, and it's just, you know, it's probably, or anything, maybe an implementation step down the road, or maybe even out the next transportation plan update would be, you know, it's probably a little too early at this point for the town especially to do much with that. But I did also wanna take the opportunity to, I've spoken to the consultant, and one of the things we're gonna add, I think we're gonna add some information in the, probably, transportation technology section and with the recommendations, is some things about electric car, electric car charging stations.
Yeah.
That is one of the areas, I know that it's the town, you know, where we don't really have much of a policy about it. We do have some language in the UDO, you know, with some standards for that, but that's one of the things that I know PCB has mentioned, council's talked about over time a little bit. So, that's one other thing that we're gonna be adding in here, is some discussion about electric car charging stations and possibly a recommendation for, you know, if we need to look at some policies or whatnot for this.
And that's not clear to me, you know, looking at whether, as, because we're gonna start seeing more electric cars on the road, whether that would be something that the DOT would be leading in terms of providing funding and, you know, in term, who's gonna bear the responsibility of, I mean, we can have the option of funding it, but, you know, we don't, right now, we only have one or two charging stations, right? So, that's something to look at, and they haven't really been clear as to how they're gonna support.
You put it in the subdivisions and the apartment complex when you put as part of the, on the units, you know?
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, because as part of one or two charging stations in that, and also as part of, when you do a subdivision, as kind of a...
Yeah, and so, that may be one of the, you know, that could be one of the recommendations that we make sure is in the plan, is to look at policies or even look at mandatory UDO to require that, if the council wanted to go that far. So, we're, hopefully, by the next time you see this plan, there'll be some information in this section about some car, electric car charging stations, and we can maybe have a little bit more discussion about that in particular.
So, the last element that you'll find in the action plan speaks to funding and finance. So, just wanted to kind of call your attention to that. I'm sure that particular section will get a nice hearty review.
It will.
So, that's really the plan. That's the five chapters. There are three appendices that we wanna mention. The first one being kind of the standardized cross-sections. This section is kind of being updated, is the best way to put that, right? So, we're kind of going through the process of updating that in terms of dimensions and that kind of thing. There's also a street design guide that, again, gives town, gives staff some guidance on what some of the criteria should be based on different street types. And then, you have some standardized cross-sections.
And if I can jump in here, this was one of the sections that staff immediately had some comments about, and that we've already talked to the consultants about. So, this is, as I've been telling you, I think, over the last year or so that we've been working on this plan, going to more of a street typology, methodology for our cross-sections, which, that's what this is. That's why we have gone to the, that table that Jonathan just showed you, is, you know, cutting down the number of cross-sections we have. I think currently in our adopted plan, we have somewhere between 20 and 25 cross-sections, or maybe even more, because we have so many cross, specific cross-sections called out for specific roads. And so, what we would like to do is go to more of this typology, where we have some very standard cross-sections, depending on the number of lanes, and then we have the illustrated cross-sections. And then, one of the things we still have to add in is the dimensions. We need to get, we need the dimensions of right-of-way, and then we're gonna have some probably more standardized dimensions for cross-section elements. So, unlike our current plan, where you see a cross-section, and you see all the numbers at the bottom, given, you know, how wide the lanes are, how wide the median is, and how wide the right-of-way and everything is, instead of having that associated with the specific cross-section, we're gonna have the individual cross-section elements called out and have some standards. So, for example, travel lanes, the standard will be 12 feet, but they can be, they can be wider, and depending upon approval by town and DOT, they may be able to be narrowed to 11 feet. Wide outside lanes, the standard's gonna be 14 feet, but they can go to 16 feet. Medians, you know, there's gonna be a standard there instead of, in our current, like, in our current plan, we have 18-foot medians, 10-foot medians, 14-foot medians, 21-foot medians, 22-foot medians, 25-foot medians. So, the goal is to try and give us a little bit more flexibility from the staff standpoint and being able to work with DOT and developers, while still giving us that guidance that we need to make sure that ultimately the town gets what we really wanna see on the road.
Appendix B is project sheet, so that's gonna provide a little bit more information on the projects, and I think this format probably will be adjusted, given some of the conversations that we just had. And then, the last appendix is Appendix C, which you've at least got the portion, the early part of that handed out to you all today. So, that's the plan, five chapters, three appendices, two hours and 15 minutes. But we had, we did before we broke, we wanted to have a conversation about projects.
Well, I just wanted to give everyone in the council an opportunity. I know we've been jotting notes and probably have some personal comments or thoughts we've got from neighbors and things like that. So, I wanna give everyone an opportunity to present any issues that you'd like to, that you wanna talk about the next session in detail. I don't wanna get into the details tonight, but at least broach the subjects so Jonathan and staff, Courtney, Benjamin, can maybe do a little digging into it beforehand, make it a little more productive. So, TJ, are you ready to lead us in this discussion? You have any comments or questions? You can go first.
I guess my overall thing is that there's lots of projects here, and if we were to pie in the sky, do all of them, would that put us in our end state? And our roadway network would be complete, and we wouldn't have to really adjust it, just maintain it. Or are there certain portions therein that if we did them, we could get to an end state that isn't broken, that will function enough? Like, how can we get to that spot as quickly as possible? So, some of these are really big-ticket items, so we might not be able to do them right away. So, what's the best path forward as experts to get us there?
Okay.
And you're gonna have to have dollar values associated with that stuff, and sort of a way for us to get to that funding, kind of like the staff has done for CIP for us. They've given us a plan of how we can get to these objectives, and now it's just up to us to make that happen. So, I don't really have anything specific about any of these projects here. I think that'll be good discussion for next time.
Okay.
Liz, we'll just go down the road here.
Okay. Well, I think when we start looking at all these projects, I really, and I think we've talked about it to this point tonight, about the criteria behind it. I think it's gonna be important to understand why these projects are on the list, and then why they're in the near-term, midterm, or the long-term. I'd like to understand the criteria, and I'd like to make sure we kind of do that in a real data-driven way, too. That would be important to me. And then, the only project I'll pull out right now is the 147 connection. I know we've talked in the past about that that alignment may move, it may not be where it is, and yet, we have it on a point, on the map here, and we're calling it the new alignment. So, I would somehow wanna have some discussion around that.
And we can certainly have that. There is, I know from the consultant, they're doing a lot of work for DOT as well, and there's been some recent model runs with, not necessarily changing the overall alignment of 147, but potentially, I think one thing they looked at is, what would, what would happen if they extended Little Drive over the 147? So, our consultants, I think, do have some of that information, so we'll work with them to make sure that that can be brought back, and we can have a little bit more discussion about that 147 extension project.
Is that it, Liz?
That's all I have right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of things. One is, I've heard that Wake County on their revised Park and Plan has a bikeway that will go from Morrisville to Raleigh, and if we could take a look at that approved plan and see if our plan has some of that information on it, I'm sure it's just a very small part that we would have to align with the Wake County, but that might be worth aligning our plan with that, so that for future build-out, we don't prohibit them from doing their project.
We can certainly take a look at that. Last I heard is that Triangle Bike Way project was envisioned to be pretty much completely within the I-40 right-of-way, or on the opposite side, I-40, sort of on Umset Park side, running from Umset Park up to Airport Boulevard, but staying on the north side.
So, it'd be outside our jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay.
But I know there has been some discussion at different points about get the bikeway to Airport Boulevard and then what, and so, we can certainly check with Wake County planners and make sure...
Yeah, just to, because I knew it started with us. That would be good. Connections, I'd like more data on the Green Drive connection and the Crabtree Crossing connection. I'd also like to have consideration of the design for the Morrisville Carpenter Road. There's a series of right-in, right-outs, and I think that changes how traffic flows, and that might not have been considered in your model. So, at least to discuss it, you don't have to put it through your model again, but I've been receiving some feedback about that. The Airport Boulevard flyover is listed on our projects. I'd like to know if that is constructed, how will that impact the traffic on Morrisville Carpenter? I'm hoping that it would lessen some of the burden of it, and maybe that's another priority we could push to de-emphasize the Morrisville Carpenter flyover, maybe. Also, there is a connection that is mentioned, going from the Airport Boulevard to the Twin Lakes subdivision, and I didn't see what it was called. There's like a road, but it doesn't say Airport Boulevard Connection, it says some other road. You know, there's little dotted lines.
That may have been a mapping error.
Okay.
I know one of the things with some of the maps, there were, they did, and a lot of the smaller neighborhood roads, the names were still on there, and sometimes I noticed it even, and I made comments, that some of the, on some of the maps, it's hard to tell what is the extension, so...
Exactly. Is that an extension, or is that an error?
The only extension I'm aware of is the Airport Boulevard extension, connecting to the existing section of Airport Boulevard and Twin Lakes, and pulling it all the way over to 54.
Right. But I don't know what it's called, because I couldn't figure it out.
It is, it's just the Airport Boulevard extension.
Okay.
I'm not aware of another road extension.
It wasn't necessarily on the lists that were shared tonight, so I don't know if that just needs to be double-checked, and maybe, you know, there's a lot of lists, so I might have missed it, too.
They had the flyover on one of the lists, but I don't know.
Right, but not the extension, the actual project with the extension.
It should have been on there, but I'll double-check that.
Okay. I appreciate that.
We had talked about CAZI.
Yes, yes, very good. That's all I have.
All right. Marty, any questions from you?
We left her alone all night. All right. Steve, you're up.
I think most of mine have already been brought up, but I think the main ones for me are Crabtree Crossing and Green Road, just in terms of just getting more information of the different criteria. I think for the modeling is important to me, you know, in terms of just getting to and from these communities and what the traffic, you know, to the best extent possible, what are the potential traffic counts for a road like Crabtree Crossing? I mean, you know, in terms of residences there, how much traffic would flow? You know, people would leave 54 to come through there? I'm trying to envision myself, and I've, actually, I've run through that neighborhood sometimes to sort of see what it would be like if we opened it up, and so, just those kinds of things. I wanna learn more, and looking at the different criteria. And then, I like the fact, the slide about thinking of these emerging technologies like autonomous vehicles, electric charging stations. And the thing I didn't get to mention during the transit presentation is whether we would, you know, maybe Wake County is gonna be monitoring this as they roll this plan out, is, you know, will this plan take cars off the road eventually, you know, with, starting with the bus, and then, you know, commuter rail, to the extent we can project that? And it's sort of a long-term kind of perspective, but that is the goal, whether it happens or not. But thank you for, this has been an informative work session, and I look forward to...
And if I can address your last point real quick, just 'cause it is something that we probably can't really provide. There's been a lot of discussion at the T-PAC level, Transit Planning Advisory Committee level, about, you know, is there a way to show? And there's been discussion at Campo even over the years about a way to show, you know, if you add transit, will it pull cars off the road? And unfortunately, it's, there isn't a good way to show that. There's not any good data that's ever been collected on that anywhere, surprisingly enough. So, they've tried to put some information, they've tried to use the Triangle Regional Model to get some of that information in the past, but it's always been, it's all, it's only, that model is only as good as... it's only that, that model is only as good as the information we put into it, and we've never had good information to put into it. So it's always really been a best guess. Jonathan may be able to clarify that a little bit more, too, but there's, there's just not, we're just not that far along, even as a nation, on transit frankly, but especially for our region, where we're not far enough to really be able to say, if you add 10 buses with routes going here, you're going to take, you know, 80 cars off the road in a peak hour. We can't say that.
Are there other regions of the country that have, that have done that, or is it just, it's hard?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think, I think one of the challenges with travel demand models in general is, is kind of the mode-split component, which is what, you know, Ben's referring to, and that's kind of the challenge of accurately, you know, forecasting that, that shift from one, from one mode to the other. Yeah, I think that's something that in the years to come, there'll be a little bit more emphasis on that, but it doesn't really help us right now.
Thank you very much.
Michael, I know you don't have any, Satish?
I'll pass. Pass. 147, I'd be interested, are they still looking at connecting it to Davis as an exit versus one, to McCrimmins? But if they are, is, you know, maybe that's something we can make a statement about, kind of like what the mayor.
They talked about Little maybe being a connection.
Well, that's what I'm asking for clarification on.
Is that what you mean when you say Davis?
No, well, they talked about rewriting it just to Davis and no connection at McCrimmins.
In the hotspot study, they had looked at that. And I'll confirm if they're still looking at that as even an option. I don't believe they are, but I know our consultants are DOT's consultants, if not on that project, on, on McCrimmins project, so they've been involved with all the modeling efforts. So we can certainly have them take a look at that and confirm if DOT's set on their alignment or not. But then we also, with this plan, we do have the capability to, you know, set a policy, set the town's policy on the alignment.
Well, I'd like to see however it ends up, that we have some connection, anything possible to anybody, any of the neighborhoods along Church Street, as far up as we can go. And that, you know, if they did decide to shift the entry point to Davis from McCrimmins, I think that would open up land that could be used for other town uses or Wake County uses. Let's see. Is there anything, you had mentioned it before, about betterment costs at long-term? We're going to have some substantial costs, is that something you want to consider in this plan, or?
That's something we've looked at. We actually have a betterment study that we've done. We used our on-call consultants, and they've developed a betterment study, and that I will point over to the town manager. But we have talked about giving council some more information on that a little bit later this year with some of the other financial, town financial model discussions. So we can certainly talk about maybe adding some of that information into the plan as well. We have provided that betterment study to our consultants.
Okay, and just sticking briefly on that, are, do we going to have any betterment costs for our current projects, Morrisville Carpenter or McCrimmins? Or is that already included?
That's already included for both those projects.
And then when we talk about recommended roadway extensions, I noticed that some of these, it seems like they, as a development occurs, that development might want to do these roads themselves. Somebody just might, like we're seeing at Western Wake Competition Center, they're building their own road. So don't we already have this in the UDO, aren't we looking at it? At least we're going to have to, they have to give up their right-of-way for it.
Yeah, so with the, with the plan, like we've done with, like we use our current plan, just because of roads in there doesn't necessarily mean that the town will have to or will build it. We would first obviously go, you know, hope that the developer comes in and develops the area around it and would provide at least a right-of-way or build it, depending on, you know, where they are in relation to the road. So that still will make, that would remain, you know, the standard for us is that, you know, if a developer comes in before the town or the state funds a road or a road connection or whatnot, they would have to build it if it's on the plan.
So these ones you're not asking, is you're envisioning that the town someday would build these roads? I mean, it's been brought up in the past where we wanted to kind of do an extension.
And that's something that I think council can have some further discussion about. That ultimately, if, you know, if the town, and we discussed it with staff a little bit, if the town is going to, thinks a road is important enough to have on its transportation plan, you know, does, is it the type, I think from, from my perspective at least, I would say, if, if the council and the town views a road important enough to have on the transportation plan, we probably should be willing at some point when we can to, when we can afford it, to, to build that road or widen that road. Meaning, you know, ultimately, especially if it's a town road, it should probably go on the CIP at some point, and we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. However, we would still hopefully, you know, maintain our standard of, if, if it's an end area that where the development is still coming, hopefully it would be, it would be built as that area develops out, and each developer would build their portion.
Okay. Just look at what other towns are doing, because Raleigh's so big, I, I don't think they would agree with that kind of logic. But if it's, you know, if they're putting roads on there, they're, they'd end up paying for them. But again, I feel more comfortable, as always, development paying for itself. So I'll look forward to some policy down the road. Maybe it's kind of what we did with Morrisville, McCrimmins extension, we originally said it was going to be two lanes and we made it four. And on that list, I just, I brought it up before, the Millicent Way to me is something that's always been talked about as a greenway extension. I know RTP had, there's been discussions with RTP about it, and they were happy with it, and it's basically most of their land. But from the standpoint of priority, I think, again, this is an area of town which has no greenways, and this would connect to an area that has 24 miles of greenways and could be the closest link to the American Tobacco Trail. And, oh, Louis Stevens, if you could just double-check, because I noticed in here, you, the segment where you have for the, the build-out of Louis Stevens, it's four lanes, but I think the segment that we're talking about that's already funded is only going to be two lanes.
It's two lanes on four lanes and right-of-way.
Right, but if, just to make sure, again, you have right-hand turns, you have left-hand turns, otherwise I think you're, you know, and what's the configuration? Is it a four-way stop? Is it just two stops on Parkside Valley, so they have to wait for all the traffic that's coming? Because I guarantee you that road will be used in all, probably more than what people think. If you're only, if they're only thinking two stop signs on Parkside Valley, we'll have a nightmare there, and that's what I'm afraid of. So, thank you. And I mentioned already about the Parkside Valley at Davis.
All right, so most of them I've said, but a few things for me about the sidewalks on Redwood and Louis Stevens, there's a small segment that has been always brought up. It's on the sidewalk prioritization. Is that going to be addressed in the transportation plan? Or is that again, like a sidewalk prioritization plan that will be as part of the things which will be rolled in?
Let me pull up the map real quick.
Because I, it's just a small segment, and that's, again, like a neighborhood connection that's important to go from one neighborhood to other neighborhood.
We, the plan in Chapter Four does currently show a proposed side path on Louis Stevens Road from McCrimmins Parkway up to Parkside Valley Drive. And I believe that was based on some information from the current, a combination of things from, maybe the current Parks Immigration Master Plan may have some information about that, but then I think also some public input about a wider sidewalk along that area, so.
This is on Redwood and Louis Stevens, like just on the side, which connects the two neighborhoods, because it's a 45 speed limit, and people drive very fast, and it's just connecting Breckenridge to McCrimmins.
Yeah.
That's, that's a small intersection where.
On the plan map, there's a, it's showing a proposed side path.
Okay.
Which would be a wide sidewalk going from McCrimmins Parkway all the way up to Parkside Valley Drive on the east side of Louis Stevens Road.
Okay. And so if we can get, another thing is obviously the Millicent, we, from the Breckenridge, I don't know if the H.O.A. has sent a letter, intent, not interested in either way and roadway. And also I had a question about the Church Street. When we do, when we come up for rezoning our subdivision plans, the question that always comes is, is the road up for a two-lane or a four-lane road? And the question comes up is, it's two-lane, and our transportation plan is right now fit for only two-lane, or just an example. So how do we know, I'm just taking example of Church Street, but my main concern is throughout the presentation today, we are doing this transportation update plan in 2017, getting updated for 2018 using the 2010 census. And the growth is tremendously increasing. We have a tremendous burst in West Carey, the true traffic is increasing. Are we scoped for an increase for the next 10 years? The next update will be again 2028. How do we plan to have this all factored in for the next 10 years and have the growth factored in? That's, how do we plan to cope with that?
So, and actually, in the current 2009 plan, if, if you look at the action plan or implementation step section on that, we should have done a transportation plan update about four years ago on that one. So the, you know, as a general rule, we would do transportation plan updates more often than every eight years, which would allow you to, to get more up-to-date information. So I think if you, you know, in the action plan or action step coming out of this plan would be, again, look at, maybe not as comprehensive an update, but in a couple of years, two, three years, look at another, you know, update, just making sure the data is still good, and if, if things have changed, you know, do any modifications. So that would always be an action step, would be to, you know, continually look at updating the plan every couple of years. This turned into a larger update because it had been so long and things had changed so much. If we look at these plans on a more consistent, shorter turnaround basis, you don't have to do this larger update.
So, because are we looking at the growth pattern that we looked at in Morrisville, right? Because we are, the question I had was, we are looking at the population of only 27,000, but all are, we are the main arteries of the RTP and the entire Triangle area. How are we factoring in with the traffic coming from West Carey and other places going through? And we, the traffic, the population, from what I understand, of West Carey is almost 40,000, and that's going to increase tremendously over the next 10 years. And that will be using the traffic passing through Morrisville. How will you factor these population increase? And are we ready? They're doing their part, we've got to do our part. And are we factored in those kind of things, or because, or will we still in a clock situation coming forward?
Right. And I think that's the, the value of kind of the, the NPOs taking on the, the community vis model and, and kind of keeping that up to date, and then having the socioeconomic outputs from that model inform the travel demand model. So that's a process that's going to kind of continue to be updated. And Ben, I'm sure you were very much involved in kind of the, the update of, of that model this most recent time.
But, but the census we are using is a 2010 census, which is very old. That's my concern is that 2010, we didn't have West Carey at 40,000. Right now it's at 40,000. We didn't have 27,000 at Morrisville.
Right.
So we are using all the old data and using it 2018, so completely.
And I'll address that. I mean, there, while yes, we are, for our base data, we're using old data, I mean, we did take into account the, the higher growth rate. At the same time, there's only so much we can build.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, unless we want to have eight and 10-lane roads running everywhere through town. So the truth of the matter is, I mean, we have a lot of, of pressure from other towns around us. We have a lot of traffic coming from outside of town, through town, and to town, but, you know, there's, there's only so much we can do as far as roads. And that's why with this plan, we did spend, you know, we have a fairly large chapter on bike, bicycle connections, pedestrian connections, greenways, transit, because understanding that you can't, you know, we can keep building roads and they'll keep coming, and the roads will keep getting congested. So there's, I mean, we, we looked at it as best we could, but there's only so much we can really do.
So the reason I bring that up is that the, the rest of the streets, we are just looking at the main arteries. What about the rest of the, the other streets? Are we have capacity for the next 10 years that we know that we read like a two-lane, two versus a four-lane at, at some point? That, that we are allowing subdivisions to come getting built, and then we're saying, okay, it's not needed in our transportation plan, it's already two-lane, so we are not updated our transportation plan for the next 10 years? So are you, are you sure that we are okay with our present plans?
Yes, yeah. I mean, essentially where the, our main arteries, luckily, but, you know, mostly DOT with some town funding as well, you know, our main arteries are getting widened. Davis Drive, you'll see in the plan, that is recommended ultimately for six lanes. That's a, that's a much bigger project, much bigger question beyond the town in a little bit, and we have time on that one. For a lot of the other roads, they're, like Town Hall Drive, for example, it's severely under capacity today. So there's, there's plenty of capacity there for any future growth, you know, for example, the, the future potential town center. We've got plenty of capacity on Town Hall Drive. On Church Street, that's one where according to the model, it's still under capacity. And actually, if you look at the traffic counts, even though it gets bad at very, at certain times of day, the traffic counts are still fairly low. They're still in that 3,000 to 5,000 cars a day range, which is low. A two-lane road should be able to handle about 20,000 cars a day is, is sort of the standard. So Morrisville Carpenter is getting close to that 20,000 car mark. So for Church Street, it's, and that's another thing that we have to keep in mind when we're looking at these roads, is we see them at certain times of day and they're awful, but they're not necessarily awful 24/7. And so, and that's, that's one of the, you know, things with the model, is that the model takes that awfulness, but averages it out over, you know, 24/7, 365, to figure out, you know, okay, it may be bad for an hour every day, but for the other 23 hours, it's not bad at all. And so when you average that a lot, it really doesn't look bad.
Absolutely.
And so that's where the intersection improvement projects and making sure some of these major arteries get improved and, and, you know, we get the grade separation at the McCrimmins Parkway and maybe even at Airport Boulevard in place, that again will help to take, help to take some of that pressure off of these smaller roads, because people will choose to take generally the quickest route. And so, you know, having some of those arteries get bigger and, and be able to take more traffic will help alleviate ultimately some of the smaller two-lane roads.
And the other thing is for, I've asked before, the TI, Courtney, is part of, the enhancement is part of your UDO update, right? Which is going to be coming up?
That's correct.
Okay. And October 12th, we have asked a lot of questions and a lot of things. Can we get this at least a week before so that we don't get it on a Thursday night? And a lot of things to digest.
Yeah, that's our goal, was to get you more information ahead of time. Just do want to note that our, our, your, your work session is on October 17th.
Yes, 17th.
The Planning and Zoning Board meeting is on October 12th. So I do want to note, you may not, on the 17th, we may not be able to get you a fully buttoned-up PZB recommended plan, but if we can, we'll get you as buttoned-up a plan as possible, and we'll make sure that, that you're clear on what the PZB recommendations were if there are changes. So, and we'll give that information to you just as quickly as we can. We'll start pushing information out to you, of course, ahead of time as much as we can, but then there may be some pieces that come in only a day or two before the meeting because we have our PZB meeting so close.
All right, at least what, what PZB is getting, at least we can get that, because at least we can start reading that. It would be.
That's, that's what we did this time, you know, when we sent out the, the draft plan document to PZB, we also sent it to you. So we will certainly continue to do that as we send things to PZB, make sure council gets the same information.
Thank you.
We're also doing, we're working really hard to keep our website updated with information as well, so all of our presentations are getting uploaded, all versions of the draft plan will continue to be uploaded and, and stuff, so we are, we're working really hard to try and keep this information pushed out. we're working really hard to try and keep this information pushed out as quickly as we can.
I really appreciate it. I think it's a lot of hard work, and you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a couple of things, some of them have already been mentioned, but just going down the list here, the, would like to see the data on the proposed Crabtree Crossing extension, how that got back on after being taken off. Also, it'd be nice to know the, I think the 147 discussion plays into that connection quite a bit. I think there is a difference between a 147 connection to Town Hall Drive and what it would do to Crabtree Crossing versus a 147 connection to Little Road. So interested in what that would do, and also mitigation options we have if that connection is made to the residential neighborhoods. Been mentioned a couple of times, Millicent Road, seems like it's a pretty standard neighborhood there, and to add kind of commuter traffic to what is pretty much but neighborhood road with tons of driveways and kids and stuff, it just sounds problematic. So I'd like to know more about that and why, or, you know, can we move forward with the, a greenway connection there? Heard from a couple of people about green, the connection to green, again, maybe what that would look like, and, and would people use that as a cut-through if you're coming on aviation instead of making a right at 54? Are people going to be cutting through what is now a, obviously, a quiet neighborhood and probably not designed for a ton of traffic? There's not even curb and gutter there on some of those roads back there. So I'd be concerned about sending through commuter traffic. It would benefit commuters and not necessarily residents as much, so I'm a little concerned about that. Talked a little bit about the aviation, Morrisville Carpenter Road grade separation. I'm, I'm kind of believing that if we do a lot of these other projects with the grade separations and enhancements around town, that, that might, may or may not necessitate a grade separation there, which I think would have a huge, I'd say, negative impact on the town's historic center. And the last thing I had on my list was Church Street. It sounds like if it's remaining two lanes, and this is kind of a little off-topic, but it sure would be nice to have the DOT widen the shoulders on that road. There's an awful lot of areas that people have run off the road into the ditches. There's just not that much. It's a dark road, the lighting's not very good, and there, with Providence Place and Kits Creek and Shiloh and all those neighborhoods back there, it's pretty heavily traveled. And I think it's, you know, we're asking for more accidents unless we do something about the shoulders in particular. If we are going to keep it two-lane, then is there something we could do to address? And I'm not sure how that works into this plan. It's, it's maybe a little bit off-topic, but I'll leave that up to you all to address. So that was kind of my, my list. Jonathan will hopefully get you out of here by 9:30. I just want to, any last thoughts before we say goodnight? So go ahead, TJ.
We did receive a couple of emails about the Crabtree Crossing extension that had some pretty strong statements that looked like they were data-driven. So if you guys could sort of answer that, we don't want to just read the email, we'd like the response of staff to whether or not those points made are true, and how we can address them or mitigate them, as Mark said. So if we can sort of dig into the accuracy and validity and how we can make it better to sort of allay the residents' concerns, that would be helpful. Because that's, that's one that's, it was a big deal a number of years ago, and I think it's going to be a big deal this time. So it's good to sort of get in front of it, and...
Just allow us extra time, because if we're going to then put points to one, if we've received 100 other emails, we then have to start putting points to those two, which is extremely time-consuming. Don't have a problem doing it, just recognizing it's going to take us longer to get that information, because there were likely just be one to two staff members responding comps to all those, so it becomes very time-intensive.
I think it might be worthwhile, though. It's up to the council to decide that.
Planning and zoning is having a work session on Thursday. Maybe, you know, we could see what is a result of that. The hundreds of, there is a significant amount of emails, I think, on some of the other projects as well. It would, I'm not so sure I want to go down that path, but I would like to see what PNC talks about on Thursday before we make that recommendation.
And also, there is the point of whether or not we want a public input at the next one?
We want, I want public input at any meeting.
I think that's fine. Mark indicated that that's probably what we're going to want to do. I agree.
Yeah, I think every opportunity, so our loyal public member here, did you have any questions or comments before we close, close the session? All right. We successfully did that. Okay. Thank you.
And so it sounds like we won't be directly addressing those emails, or we will? Sounds like, it sounds like a no.
I'm happy to do so. I just wanted to be really clear that it, it, we have received several of the comments, so if our, we have to treat all the comments the same.
Right. I'm sorry, what, what was, what was the ask? I mean, I...
To respond, we've, so the email went to the planning board, this is the email we went to. We've had words of law, and I think with the council as well. If we're going to go through and start cataloging all those emails, responding to each of the points in there, we have set up, we have a portal that we've opened up, it's just beginning, plus a lot of other emails that have been sent directly to Ben as well. At this point, we've just been collecting them and putting it in a spreadsheet. We haven't been responding other than thank you for your comment. If you want us to go through point by point of all those emails, I'm just saying we need to recognize how much time, we have to treat them all the same at this point. And again, don't have a problem doing it, it's just going to take us longer to get that information back to you.
I think that's part of the process.
Yeah, I think we want to see the emails.
I think when you engage in the process is important, because if we continuously churn as people send in a comment, I think we're going to be able to bucket them at the end. There's going to be a certain, you know, similar theme, and we have a response for that similar theme, versus it's going to expend a lot more effort if we respond immediately kind of thing, because that's interruptive.
In the background, we just responded to spreadsheets. And for example, with the UDA, what we ended up doing is we collected, and we actually started responding to every single one.
You know, at that point, I don't even know how many hours were spent, you know, all that process.
I would say sometimes definitely worth responding to some of them. Sometimes a general thank you for your comments probably would have been sufficient, but we have to treat them all the same. So if we're going to start doing counterpoints to the information that provided...
That's outside of a meeting.
I'm not, I'm not sure we're asking for counterpoints, I'm just asking for the emails.
I think, I think council colleagues are asking staff to respond...
Oh, I see.
To the specific points that were provided. Again, we can do that, just, I want council to be aware of the amount of time that's going to take us to do, not just that email, but several other that we received at this point. Because we're going to have to, whatever we do in the treehouse, we need to take it as a bucket, or we're just receiving comments?
Isn't the response, isn't the response, look, come to a meeting?
The response is thank you for, our, our, our response is to thank you for your comment, you know...
We have a bunch of meetings.
...to speak. That's not a general comment, but I don't think that's what council colleagues are asking. You're asking us to say, are these, the statistical methods they talked about, is that, you know, accurate, inaccurate, et cetera, a little more?
Liz, Liz had a comment here.
I was just going to say, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're, well, I'm not asking you to respond to all the emails. I'm not sure that's what TJ's saying either. I think we want to be clear on what the facts are on that issue. We want to know what the facts are up here. So when, when it comes time to discussing whatever the issue is, we want to be clear on what the facts are and not get our, our facts from an inaccurate email. So are you asking...
Unverified.
Or unverified?
Like the, the increase in traffic if Crabtree Crossing goes through. It was said it's going to be huge. I mean, we don't have data for that, but...
We don't, but I think that's going to be the response. We don't have data, depending on how you design an intersection.
Right.
There will be an increase.
I mean, so we can do some general...
I, I trust staff to sort of vet all of it and be able to sort of address the general concerns. It doesn't have to be point by point, but we have to make sure that the citizens feel like they were heard, and the email wasn't just passed on and nothing really, it was read, but it wasn't really addressed.
So you've done this in the past, Courtney, where you've bucketed issues, and then you, you put the concern in one buck, in one column, and in the other column, you've put, here are the facts.
We don't think they do that. That's extremely time-consuming.
Okay, even that's time-consuming.
I mean, weeks worth of staff time, we'll go into that. And again, don't have a problem doing it, I just don't want to, A, discount anybody's comment, I mean, I don't want to inadvertently of doing that, and two, you know, someone's going to be cut and paste, you know, some of the comments are, we don't like X. Comment, no, it's just probably going to be staff's response, there's not much I can do, but I just don't want to get into the form of the debating points, you know?
People are entitled to their comments, and I think part of me says we should take that at face value.
Yeah. I, I don't think you should respond like in a, this, for that kind of thing, but to, to validate maybe some of the assumptions would be helpful.
I think there is some very similar with the UDA, and that's what I would like.
I don't think you need to spend the time, but, I mean, it was well documented before, if you want to use some of that, too. I think it's, I think at the end, though, I think it's up to us to decide what's fact, like we always do up here.
Right. And I don't want this to be a, I've got 100 people, you've only got 50, my point is stronger. It's not about that. It's about, you know, looking at all of this information, what's best for the town, and how we can best come out with the...
Right. And I think in 2008, I'm saying it was this, it was done that way. There was data, so I don't know what's changed.
I can interject here into the conversation. Council members have already asked for some specific information on Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension that I think may, may get to some of your questions and, and may get to some of the points in the emails. So those, you know, those will be, that'll be addressed with, when, when we bring back some more of the information that council's already asked for. As a reminder, you know, with, with staff for this, we're, we're just giving you the data. So like Courtney said, it's, it would be extremely, it would be a lot of staff time if we were to go through and, and have to log some sort of response for every comment we received. It would be, I, I think it'd be better for all of us concerned if you get all the, you know, we'll provide you all the citizen comments, and then we'll provide the updated data that we need to on, on these things that you've already asked for, and then you can, you'll, you'll have the full picture. And like Councilmember Schlink said, you know, you've seen what the, you'll see what the public has commented, and you'll see the data and information that staff and the consultant team have provided, and then you can make the decision based on that information. And, you know, if you, if, I think you get in, there's a concern if you start, if staff starts responding to every citizen comment, too. Like Councilwoman Scroggins-Johnson said, you know, you don't want to get into a he-said, she-said, or, you know, point, counterpoint, point, counterpoint, because that's not going to be beneficial for anyone. The important thing is to make sure the public knows that, that, you know, we are taking the comments and that we're considering them, and that we're forwarding, forwarding them to both the PCB and to you.
I'm good with that.
All right.
I'll go through, and I'll take a look at what we did in the UDA, and we'll come up with something similar, that way where these comments are being put out there, and if you have any information that supports what they're saying, we can pride that as well.
All right. Jonathan, I'm going to give you the final word. Any closing thoughts? We do, do appreciate you stepping in and covering for Allison, and I noticed you didn't give us your contact information, which was a very smart move.
Oh, no, but I can, I'm not that, that shy.
Should we track you down? Somebody knows you.
Will you be here on Thursday?
I will not be here on Thursday, but I will be back with you all on the 17th.
Okay, great.
Sounds good. Thank you all very much. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. Allison, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's now 9:27. Thank you all for coming out tonight.